I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a committee of the whole and we are doing this as a recorded meeting. So, personal information, including your image, voice, name, opinions, any other personal information disclosed by you during the meeting is collected by the City of Roseland under Freedom of Information Protection of Privacy Act for the purpose of your participation in public input or the rest of the meeting. I know we, I think everybody on here as our attendees are part of our, part of our program today. So probably doesn't matter. But anyway, if anyone doesn't want to be recorded, they should jump off now. And no counselors, that doesn't apply to you. You have stuck. But I'd like to have public input. Is there anybody who is not on the agenda that wants to speak? I think not. So I'm going to go into the adoption of the agenda. Do we have a mover? Terry and Chris is our seconder, all in favor. Okay, and now we're going into our discussions and presentations. And first up is presentation from WSP on our official community plan, our update for that. So we are turning it over to them. And I'm not sure who is the speaker, but it's all you.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Mayor Moore and members of council for your time today. I'm just going to take a moment to introduce our team, just in case everyone's not familiar. So I'm Nola Hill Martin. I'm a senior planner at WSP and Chen Pang is on the call as well. She's a senior project manager with our team. So Ingrid Leepa, I'm sure some of you are familiar with. Ingrid's from Kimberly. She's our public consultation specialist. Unfortunately, she's double booked today. She's the event coordinator for RDI at Selkirk College, bridging silos. Adapting to climate change, it's very mouthful, adapting to climate change and low carbon resilience for small communities and rural regions. So she apologizes for her absence, but she said they've got over 50 speakers and 200 people registered for the event from all over BC. And she said also of note is that the City of Roseland is a participant in the two-year FCM-funded climate adaptation capacity building project that the conference is a part of this year that will wind up in June. So she thought that was important for us to mention and I give, give kudos to. So I'm not sure if Rachel's going to put the slideshow up or if we should on our end.
Nola, if you like, you can screen share. That's why I made your panelists. So just down the bottom, there's that green button, and then you can control the slides as you need to there.
Okay, fantastic. I apologize. Just give me just one moment to pull that up. Pardon me, pardon me. The awkwardness of this.
I was gonna say, I do have it if it helps you. I have it on a screen, which I can share if that does help.
No, I think we're good now. Let me just, yeah. And I just need to go to the start here. Apologies, I'm just getting some notes up as well. Okay, we are good. We've got our title slide up and can everybody see the? Is it in, is it in presentation mode on your end?
We see the slides on the left and we see the one opening screen in the, in the center. So it's not.
Oh.
Yeah, it's not in presentation mode.
Okay, sorry about that. It's this two, two-screen business. Let me try again here. Maybe, maybe if Rachel, if it's okay, maybe we'll do it on your end if that's all right. So concerned about my ability to make this work quickly enough.
That should be up there now. Can everyone see my one there?
Yep. That's great. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. Okay, so I think we can skip to, yeah, the next slide there. So, so today we're, we're doing a check-in basically on the, the background and key issue summary that, that you were sent and the public engagement plan, the work that's been done to date and the next steps of that plan. So Chen's going to be filling in for Ingrid and present on the public engagement portion. So we can go on to the, the next slide would be great. So we're just going to cover on the OCP update portion of things, the official community plan. We're going to talk about the review process a little bit. So where we are in the process, the Roseland community snapshot that's included in that document, review the past, past planning work and key issues that we've uncovered as part of this, you know, phase, phase two of work out of the six phases to get to our end goal and the technical review summary from our technical team on the engineering side. Let's get to the next slide. So where are we in the process? So as I mentioned, we've got six phases to go through. So before the new year, we had the, the phase one kickoff, just establishing communications and scheduling. We've just wrapped up phase two, which is the background analysis that we're going to be reporting to you on today and the kind of preliminary high level kickoff engagement activities. And Ingrid had been working on the public engagement plan development with Stacy and the rest of the team. So we are at the very beginning of phase three and as we're in the first week of March and the rest of the month and April will be covering the public engagement events. So it's quite, you know, it looks, it looks very lovely and organized at this stage. And if we go to the next, the next slide, I think you've all worked on projects. You know, it often goes this route where we're on this pathway from discovery to design. So the, the city of Roseland has an enormous wealth and, and compendium of background documents. So, you know, we've been working through these documents to try to come up with a good framework and a good organizational method to, to get us to our final design piece. So in a project of this magnitude, where there's a vast amount of information to be gathered and analyzed prior to it all making sense. And, you know, we've got important relationships to be developed between the project team and, and the city. The first part of the project can seem a little bit chaotic and unpredictable because the team is getting its footing and trying to figure out what's important and what's not. And feedback from, you know, all aspects of our enclosed system are really valuable at this stage. So as the project team gets their footing and sees the needs and opportunities and gaps in the system, and we start to develop design concepts and prototypes, things are going to start to smooth out. But there'll be some failed thought experiments and design dead ends and important refinements through this time. So appreciate you, members of councils, Kathy and Dirk and Terry on the advisory committee. And I'm sure you understand that well from, from the first few meetings that we've had. I can pop to the next slide, please. So by the time of the, the final design, the noise in the system, you know, it's going to be eliminated and our concepts are going to be honed. And, you know, the overall plan will resonate and be clearly communicated. Can skip to that next slide, Rachel. Great. So we can, we can move on to the next one. So who is involved? So phase one largely, you know, working with Stacy is the, the planning manager and the consultant team. So we've just wrapped up phase two, and that was largely administration, the consulting team and city council members and the advisory committee. And as I mentioned, a high level preliminary public engagement survey that Chen will be covering. As we move into phase three, things are getting broader. So city administration, the team, but we're also going to be speaking more in depth to the public and our regional partners as well to, to shape and evolve the OCP. So on to community snapshot. So in the background review dot report, we've got a few different topics covered and those were selected because between the, the high level public engagement survey and the discussions we've had with the advisor committee as well as the, the city staff, you know, these are some, some important elements of, of life in Roseland. But due to time and interest and importance, we're just going to focus today on the population and growth piece. I think, you know, as counselors, you've, you've all got a good grasp on housing and affordability, employment, municipal services, nature and recreation and culture and heritage. But the population growth piece is quite important and we're going to have a little discussion time in the session today with you to, to get some of your thoughts on this topic. So go to the next slide. So we've been looking at two growth scenarios that, that have come out of the, the RDBK and the province. So one scenario sees some incremental growth and the other sees a negative growth. And, you know, each one is going to impact the policy approach and direction. And it's going to impact a number of things within, within the OCP update, you know, from infrastructure and climate adaptation and community building. So these are important discussion pieces. And, you know, as we move into the next phase and are starting to work on visioning, part of, part of that is going to be having a council endorsed growth scenario that we, we need all of you on board with and your, your approval of to move forward. So you can go to the next slide. So some of the, some of these growth questions, and if you have any notes, please jot them down. And as I said, well, we'll have about 15 minutes to, to discuss this more. And this slide will come up again if you miss any of them. But, you know, we need to have a, have some thought on what is the optimum size of Roseland? How does the pandemic, you know, affect the city from a growth perspective? How does the growth contribute to affordability? Is that's been a big issue that's come up time and time again in most of the interactions our team has had. And, you know, how do we, how do we plan for infrastructure to support that growth? Next, thank you. So on to the, the background review and key issue identification. As I mentioned, the city has done an incredible job of compiling a great library of planning documents and a lot of them are, you know, in, in the works and implementation as well. Our team, in order to organize, this is a different approach because of the, the large amount of background information. We use the strategic sustainability plan and the 11 focus areas is just an initial framework to organize that background information. So our team did a first round review of all the, the documents and looked at some of the gaps that, you know, that may exist from, from our view as planning consultants, you know, in terms of caring, caring Roseland 10 years, 10 years ahead. And so, so we did an initial pass on that. We created a set of workbooks that we reviewed with the advisory committee and did some breakout sessions. And the advisory committee members actually took these workbooks back as, you know, homework and, and filled them out to the best of their abilities or based on their, their background and knowledge. We then reviewed the, these workbooks with city administration or the planning manager and the advisory committee members. And a lot of the information was summarized in thematic categories. So issues, opportunities, and additional work needed. So you can go to the next slide. So just as a refresh on the focus areas from the sustained strategic sustainability plan, we, we use these because, you know, there are fewer categories that are fairly simple for most people to understand. And the, the current OCP had, you know, it had about, you know, 17 categories. So this just, just made organization a little bit easier. As these are general OCP topics as well that are, that are often used. So you can go to the next. So some of the, the highlights that came out of the workbook summary discussion are, you know, so overarching sort of category is the, the scope, the use in the organization. There were a lot of comments about, you know, this has to be an effective tool that serves different audiences. You know, these key issues and gaps emerged about regulations, infill, and how that relates to affordability and housing, as well as housing diversity. Recreation is obviously very important at the forefront of a lot of people's minds in, in the city. And there was a lot of, a lot of recommendations for the focus areas to be tweaked in the wording. So I think that was, that was largely agreed upon by everybody. And, you know, some, some focus areas like sense of community and governance and intergenerational care and learning were thought of as more of a principle than a, than a section of the OCP. So we're still at the early stage here. So, you know, we didn't want to get too much into the weeds on all this, but it's more just to compile the information. So we keep it in mind as we get into, to policy development in the next phase. So we can go into the next one. So another kind of theme that came out was the, the interrelationships and the impacts. So climate and sustainability is a very important one, but also understanding how that impacts cost of living and affordability of residents is another big consideration. And a lot of the discussion in the first advisory committee meeting that I was involved in, it was heavily focused on community engagement and making sure we had a really good understanding of a cross-section of community needs and that we weren't just getting feedback from, you know, a certain, a certain element of, of the community. There's also, you know, in a lot of mountain towns, there's the, the desire for recreation and development, along with conservation of the natural environment that brought everybody there in the first place is very important. And a good amount of focus, which isn't, isn't really common, to be honest, on, on municipal assets and asset management and how you link that to, to some of the other policy areas and, you know, and things that impact Roseland is like growth and taxes. And that needs to receive some more attention. So to, just to kind of high level sum up some of these key OCP issues and gaps, again, it's the, the growth and taxes, I think, sounds like a bit of a broken record, but the housing options and diversity, the question of how do you support incremental development to ensure, you know, you don't have a, you know, mass kind of lot consolidation and large-scale development come in. But how do you make it an affordable and attractive option to those who are looking to do smaller, smaller size bills? And looking at attracting remote workers and employment, diversifying employment opportunities, especially in consideration of the last year and the impact it's had on tourism. Enhancing policies in the OCP for all art forms, culture and heritage, because the focus can lean a little too heavy onto, to the recreation side of things. Having just said that, there is a desire for a recreation master plan that has a regional approach and also desire for general improvements to transportation options in Roseland and within the region. So I'm almost done, my piece, but on to the technical review summary. So I think most of you know, Elise, who lives in Roseland. So, so Elise produced the section on climate change and resiliency. So just going to highlight, she wrote a thorough report, but it's quite technical. So I'm just going to focus on the next steps piece. Some of the, the next steps she recommended are to operate, operationalize the existing plans, focus on efforts where incentives can be leveraged. Look at, you know, the existing policies and come to, you know, come to a decision on which ones are in conflict with each other. And set goals and targets that could be embedded in the zoning bylaw and, you know, start using green infrastructure, natural assets as actual assets within the asset management plan. And then also, you know, back to, back to these topics of climate and the impacts on affordability and looking at lifecycle costs and, you know, make infrastructure decisions based on, based on a multi-factor assessment. So on to transportation. There was one of our transportation engineers who deals a lot in policy, drafted that section, which is in the report as well. So the recommendations are to develop strategies to enhance active transportation and integrate, you know, all modes between transit and, you know, bus service, walking, car share programs. There's a lot of discussion about electrical vehicles as well now. Looking at regional coordination and determining where investment is possible, where it's required to address those connections and establishing priority focus areas for the transportation network. And last one is, is infrastructure. So the, the GIS information Roseland has is, is excellent. The inventory of infrastructure assets. But at the moment, it outlines the, the general costs of replacement. What is, what would be needed is a, a plan that would identify the improvements and investment recommendations to achieve city goals and objectives. So having some alignment with streetscape improvements or areas where multifamily housing would be permitted and encouraged. And, you know, how that relates to, to fire flows as well. So there's just, you know, a bit of a need identified for a strategic plan for, for the infrastructure side of things. And, you know, that'll identify where those requirements will align with those higher level priorities. Okay, so on to the next is. So what we came, came down to from, at this stage, and again, we, you know, these things can be, can be tweaked, but the criteria for the consultation topics and policy development, major themes kind of emerged as lenses by which to evaluate and consider policies and, you know, how we look at implementation as well. So key things are adapting to the future. And so that, that's to encompass sustainability and climate and resiliency. Affordability and housing and, and cost of living are really important factors. You know, natural environment implications and, you know, and looking at things through a lens of, of community and sense of community. So now I think we're going to go on to some of those growth questions. We've got the slide with the questions on it right after this one. So Chen, I've been talking a long time. I just want to see if there are any initial questions or Chen, do you want to frame this, this discussion piece?
Yep. Yep. So, good morning. So I'm, I got two portions here. So this, this one is about the discussion on the growth questions. And the other one, I will give you some updates on the engagement activities after. So for this part, for this discussion on the growth, these questions, we're not looking at direction or anyhow, but this is really the first time that based on the background review that we had, that knowledge is introduced. And this is the question, we figured out that this is really a fundamental question that we want to ask everybody about. About how you think about the growth. Rachel, do you mind go back to the slides that were the two sets of number? Which is slice 10, I believe. Yep. Oh, sorry. One more down, back. Yeah, this one. Thank you. Sorry, good. One more slide down?
Yes. Thank you, Rachel. So what this is, we were, growth is a fundamental factors and how we, how we kind of tailored our OCP policies. So we got two sets of scenario here. So first one is based on the most recent one, the RDK, RDKB, the region, the regional housing needs report. So basically, in that report, it says, in the next 10 years that Roseland are looking at, the population is shrinking a little bit. And also this, another sets of number not including in this slide is there may be a slightly more dwelling units needed because household size going down. So that's the, that's the whole information, whole sets of information there. So this is one scenario. And the other one in 2019, BC Province. The province did a population projection throughout the whole province for the next 20 years. So till 2041. So based on that information, they had a growth rate between annually 1% to 2%ish. That's the, that's the calculation base. So they kind of have a different set of criteria, how to determine this growth rate. So based on their number that is still fairly new, I would say 2019, that shows that we use that average growth scenario and apply to Roseland scenario. So this is the number we're getting. It seems like, yes, according to the average growth rate across BC Province, we're getting 618 people more like in next 10 years, which is totally different direction here. So when we see the number, if, if we're shrinking, then maybe we really don't need to talk a lot about how we going to develop new housing in the next 10 years, based on the regional housing needs report. But based on the BC provincial number, then we are, we probably have to kind of figure out is, we might have like 100 to 100 houses, 200 houses probably, two to 300 houses, new houses that add to new Roseland in the next 10 years. And just further on, the numbers I didn't put into this slide is get to 2041, then we're looking at 30% increase in the population. So that's definitely even more conversation that we will have. But just comparison like this regional NBC number that representing two scenario. So I want to bring this to your attention. Rachel, do you mind go to the slides we just have with the questions there? Slide 25? Let me see. 25. Or 24 or 25?
No, she's on it.
Okay. Sorry, this is online. Probably it's a little bit dragging. So I want to, so this few questions, it's still, we think it's important question. And this is will be discussed further with another stakeholder workshop that happening later in a couple of weeks. But we want to hear how you think about it is, except for talking about numbers, quantifying the growth, is what's, what is the multiple, ultimate size of Roseland? So that's the first one. We want to know that, how you think about it. What's the most appropriate size for Roseland? I would just open the floor that let people discuss.
Okay, so Chen, Stuart has a comment. And we'll just, we'll just go, people put their hands up and we can chat. Go ahead, Stu.
Yeah, I just wanted to say those projections are pretty useless. I think we've already talked about them in previous meetings. They don't really reflect what we're, what we're dealing with. You know, we, the, the short answer is we actually don't know what we're dealing with. You know, those of us that have been here for a while have seen boom and bust cycles in growth. And we don't know if we're in a, in a boom, which will be followed by a bust. And it may average out to, to slow growth over time. Or perhaps we are at the beginning of a, of a ramping up. And we, we can see lots of comparable examples of communities that have become, you know, a lot more expensive and a lot more developed through people wanting to move there for lifestyles facilitated by technological growth and, and high cost of living in other communities. So we just don't know. You know, are we, are we ramping up endlessly? Or are we at a short-term peak? But we're definitely experiencing growth right now. And I think whatever we do, we need to be, we need to be measuring what's happening in both those directions and be adaptable. We don't want to be placing a limit on development. If things get worse and then our economy is depressed, we want to be flexible. But we also don't want to be, you know, basing it naively, planning for long, slow, steady growth when we're ramping up into unaffordability. So, you know, I mean, that's, that's the short answer. There's obviously a lot of complex things that come into calculating these things and what we're going to measure to, to determine where we are. And I also don't think that, you know, the size of the community is, is the, is the appropriate measure. You know, there, there are more things like what is the demand? The demand that is going to be pushing up on affordability is, is more of a concern. And things like, you know, community turnover. I mean, it's, you know, we, we might stay the same size, but if everybody that's living here now has been priced out and we've been completely displaced by a whole new bunch of richer people, you know, the, the community is not going to be the same. And we're not going to achieve our goals. So, you know, a lot of these considerations around gentrification are the ones that, that I'd like to see addressed.
I think Andy had his hand up.
I think excellent points that Stu brought up, but I also wondered with, with WSP's work provincially, you know, that the discrepancy in those two estimates, the estimate for, for a reduction in population and a substantial increase in population over the next while, certainly brought a lot of questions to the regional district table when the report came out, right across the district. Certainly since the pandemic, there's been substantial notice in our, in our small communities of people, migration in. So we thought So we thought pandemic has likely changed all all scenarios that were previously predicted. So just wondering since WSP noted and in their expertise. Can they give us a guess estimate as to what the impact is going to be for the next few years? I mean, the trends are the trend is there. And just wondering, you know, can you guys give us some realistic projections of what you think growth is likely to be? Outside of, you know, what we've received thus far.
We can I just to answer that question that yes, we noticed the difference. And also in other municipalities and we've heard also they are not super agree with what the region come up with in terms of housing needs report. You are not the only one, definitely. So the growth there sounds like is quite I mean, quite a few municipalities, they confirmed they feel like they had actually experienced more growth than what the actual number is. And even compared to the provincial number, the provincial number is shows positive, but seems they are experiencing higher than that. That that's what I've heard and they talk about a lot about economic development and also where's where is the room to grow? So that that definitely is a chance. I'm not sure how much we can quantify this, how this pandemic affecting Roseland or even this municipality beside you. But we would like to, that's why we kind of bring this up for discussion is how how that affecting. And that back to the first question is what's the most appropriate size of Roseland? And that probably matters more. In that way.
I'm going to call on Terry. Terry has his hand up.
Thanks. So I want to build on a couple of things that Stu brought up and I think a little differently. So one of the things that I've starting to appreciate is again, in in sort of my 40 years plus here, I've seen blips. So I wouldn't call them boom and bust, but Rawson's been on a on a fairly steady growth and certainly real estate prices have have been climbing and dramatically in the last little while. So the issue of affordability is is an interesting one. However, just on the work that I've been doing with Janice looking over her shoulder, across the whole province. Things have been going up. So while, you know, if you were just at a Rawson lens, you'd be gasping your breath, I think no matter. You know, where a young family, for example, wanted to settle, they were going in in British Columbia. You know, the the relative value of real estate and across Canada for that matter is is going up. So I think we're moving in parallel in terms of affordability with the rest of the province. So I just wanted to put that out there. But then you know, the optimum size, one of the things that I worry, one of the things that that we love about this town is it is how it's centrally sort of packaged. I think we're one of about four or five communities that I know that doesn't have a strip like so Revelstoke and Revelstoke and Nelson have these nice compact downtown cores and I and I don't like the idea of trying to fit another you know, 1500 people into our downtown core, because unless we develop a whole other commercial area. So optimum size. We keep bashing around the 5,000 number and Jen, just based on your, that means two to 300 new houses, given smaller family sizes and things like that. That's kind of concerning to me, actually. I'm trying to think about where two or 300 more houses in our town would go and it makes me kind of and what what going for groceries at Ferals would look like. So that's a concern.
Okay, we've got some counselors that haven't spoken yet. Anybody want to get on this question? Janice.
Thank you. I was wondering, I know that the RDKB. I guess with the forecast, I'm just thinking about what I learned in the in early January, when I got a read an economic forecast put out by Central One, which is you know, does the economic forecasting for all the credit unions? And what I didn't realize is that when they forecast growth for the Cootney areas, it's always been a little lower than the rest of the rest of the province. But it includes the East Cootney, the West Cootney and the Boundary area. So you know, as the East Cootney, Cranbrook, that area, West Cootney, Nelson up north, and then the Boundary area. So the East Cootney is about 40% of what they're counting. The West Cootney is another 40%. The Boundary is only 20%. And then we're like this little tiny community in the Boundary. So you know, we could double in size and we wouldn't really move the whole Cootney forecast at all. And you know, even if we're even if so, that's the challenge with looking at those bigger forecasts, we have to understand what's happening in our community. And then, you know, we're talking about, I know we keep talking about houses because we have so many single family houses. But I think we need to think of it more in terms of housing units. So yeah, it's, you know, and and I read the background or you guys have 2.4 people per housing unit. I thought the census said 2.3, not that that's a big difference. But you know, if we're adding 40 and we're using the 5,000 sort of guideline. I'm not really fixed on how big bigger, small we need to be, as long as we can remain retain our community feel. But you know, if our midtown project goes ahead, if we continue to grow at the same rate we have in four years, we're halfway to we're going to be halfway to that 5,000 from where we're at now. So you know, we may be seeing, we can't forecast exactly moving forward. We may have a bit of an exponential growth going on, or it may flatten out and be a little more stable. Or it could drop again. We don't know. But I think we have to plan for any one of those. Any one of those results. As best we can. Sometimes that's all you can do.
Chris or Dirk?
I think I think what we need is a little bit more inventory here. So, you know, I look at the population we have now and I think we're going to grow organically by 100 to 200 people in the next four years ish. You know, so kind of, excuse me, obtaining balance within our community of of everything, both affordable rental. And and some of the houses that that some of the people are coming, they're going to desire. So we're going to have a tough time keeping up, I think, with just in in the our capacity to be able to to build enough for for people. My opinion.
Dirk.
Yeah, I echo Stu's concerns about growth and affordability, but realistically, I think the only thing we can control is the cost of living here. Real estate prices, I'm sure are going to go up and that really only matters if we're leaving and then who can come back in to fill our spaces. I don't know how you I with everybody that I don't think we can get too big because then we lose the community. I don't know how to control that without spiking. You know, reality costs or keeping them down by letting our community sprawl. So it's, I don't really know.
Something something to consider. I mean, there are predominantly single family homes in in Roseland and like most communities in BC, you know, those homeowners are aging and maybe looking to to downsize. So as as people shift into maybe multifamily units that are perhaps more easily accessible and easier to maintain and care for, and maybe a bit more affordable that provides them some some income in their retirement. You know, those homes and lots will will come available. And so what I was mentioning earlier about incremental infill and so not losing the feel and the look and the the aesthetic of the the design of housing in in town is you know, having having splits like going to semi detached housing or having some, you know, triplex units or or fourplexes or something along those lines. You know, where you could have, you know, a family living, living together in the same units. And so that doesn't require that additional land component, but it it allows, you know, the scale to stay the same. What often happens in places where, you know, you don't plan for this and you don't allow your infrastructure to support it because it's cost prohibitive for for small scale builders to to do infill is you get somebody with the money to come in, purchase those properties that are getting run down, do a lot consolidation and they have to sit and hold and wait. And then that ultimately can result in a much larger scale development project. That usually causes quite a bit of upset in town. And those developers want to make money, so they're going to be you know, looking for for a higher value or higher cost per square foot. And so that also negatively affects the affordability aspect. So just just some things to to consider, you know, to to Janice's point, it's not all like additional houses. It's just, you know, adjusting the housing mix effectively as you go forward.
Well, those are the tools that we have too, right? Land use, how how we use our land and the policies that we put in place, which is, you know, part of what we're talking about here, you know, I mean, for me, the optimum size of Roseland is not too much bigger than it is now because we don't have a lot of land ourselves. We don't want, I don't think we want to do boundary expansion. We that's sort of been around the block a few times and it's not been well received. We don't want sprawl. We like our compact community. And, you know, you're going to run into parking problems or as Terry said, you know, crowding in the in the grocery store and all that. So you know, so the real the real issue is how do you keep it affordable and yet slow growth, you know? And I I absolutely agree with the provincial projections more than the regional the regional housing thing in terms of where we see our our growth going. We are seeing growth. And as Janice pointed out, I mean, we're a blip, we're a blip on that study. We don't even show up. We could have dramatic growth and and not even show up in those you know, regional thing. So that's okay. You want to get on to your next question?
Sure. So yeah, I guess we talked about the first and second now. I just want to see your points about growth, like pros and cons. I also understand you attached the affordability a little bit and actually in the later slide, slide slides that are actually showing the survey result, the preliminary survey result affordability is one of the I would say it is almost the top top picks there. So I'm just wondering how this growth will contribute to affordability or actually negative, positive, pros and cons. That's also that's one, something I want to bring it to the table for a discussion.
Who wants to start with that one? Janice.
I think that, you know, growth will come with both. I mean, you know, in theory, expanding our tax base regardless of how we expand that should mean that, you know, if we add another 100 people, that should spread some of the cost out or 100 units, housing units, that should spread some of the cost out amongst all our units. But we also have, you know, as we add units, we also increase our cost to service. So the balancing act is to try and grow those units that we need that will be in demand without having to invest in huge additional infrastructure to support either those units or the people who are going to come and live in it. So we are a high serviced, highly serviced community now, which is probably one of the reasons that we're so attractive to people. And so but you know, of course, there is invisible infrastructure, the infrastructure people don't think about that is necessary to be maintained and even expanded to support additional housing or housing units. So that could be water sewer. Sanitary, electrical, broadband, all those things that that, you know, those are going to be initial expenses. Or maybe initial expenses, but are are, you know, if we can, I think as counsel, if we're looking at where our infrastructure can support more growth, then we should focus on trying to put the growth where our infrastructure already is. And that helps us to minimize our future costs.
Yeah, good point. Terry has his hand up. Then Stu.
Thanks, Kathy. Two things. We want to have, we want to support schools in our town that that. So again, I think schools are a major contributor to livability. So I think growth. You know, we've lived through a horrible last decade where schools were shut down and it really caused disruption. So that's one one pro for having enough kids around and young families to sustain schools and retail, I would put to a lesser degree, but you know, our retailers downtown had some tough years. I think I believe they're doing better now, but that's another reason why we want to have some modest growth or certainly not don't want to backslide in population.
Stu.
Yeah, I just think it's the type of growth matters. You know, if we have a moderate amount of growth that's socioeconomically diverse, then that that's going to make our community more affordable. By definition, but if growth is you know, trophy homes at the ski hill and, you know, wealthy retirees and, you know, short term rentals. That that's that's not going to give, take us in the direction we want. So, you know, it's about incentivizing the type of development and the type of of growth that we want rather than, you know, arbitrarily setting limits. If we just say, oh, we're not going to have any more houses in Roseland, well, then people are still going to want to come here and that's going to drive up the price of individual properties and the reduce the diversity even more.
Okay, who else? Dirk, Andy, Andy.
I'll, I guess I I feel similarly to what was previously said, but also note that originally the development at the ski hill was mostly about rental and and seasonal usage and it has expanded into into some permanent year round residence. But I certainly know that the build out capacity of the ski hill is substantially bigger than what it is now. And you know, the seven, I can't remember the 7,000 badge or whatever.
13,500, Andy.
Sorry, what was it, Stu?
13,500.
Right.
So currently zoned.
Right. So I think I think that has to be really seriously looked at, you know, that's kind of better growth that that doesn't doesn't align with where our community needs and wishes to be, I believe. But the the importance of maintaining the core of the community and as Terry had pointed out, it's really critical that I don't wish to see us expand the footprint of our community. You know, Redstone to the south or east and and the mountain to the west. Work and live within that capacity. And I'm and I'm already concerned about our infrastructure capacity because I think, you know, we've talked about sewers, our current underwater underground capacity, but also I think about climate change and our water availability. That's going to be a critical issue that I think we really have to keep top of mind as well in the next few years. How, you know, we've been successful in reducing our our water needs in our community by metering and education. But I think that the water is still a critical issue that that has to be factored into what our potential growth capacity is as well.
Okay. Dirk.
Yeah, I don't really have much to add. I agree 100% with Stu on, you know, diversity, just making sure we have a diverse community as it grows and that's where our power lies and trying to manage the, you know, the affordability and desirability of the community.
Chris.
One of the things that I've no noticed is how strict regulations and on development, it'll drive the price up for the land itself. Which will slow things down inevitably. So the more strict we are on what we have. The I think the slower the process of building will will be. But to that point, there are a lot of lots, even at the at the golf course that are are available. So we'll see how that happens.
Yeah, that's that's true. There are, there are quite a few lots available at at the golf course and at Red, which kind of goes to you know, Stuart's point of of, you know, what's what's available up there. I mean, to Andy's point about water, we do have a large capacity of water under the current climate because we have two reservoirs, which are more than adequate to serve our population. But thinking of the future is where we could, you know, run into some some issues up there. And, you know, And, you know, Janice was talking about, well, we get some more houses and then we share the cost. But unfortunately, we haven't seen that. As we've added houses as and as we've grown, our costs continue to grow because we continue to provide all the services and the cost of that increase. So, I mean, I always thought, yeah, okay, we we get a forty more houses, we spread, we spread the taxation wider. But it hasn't actually resulted in our taxes, you know, going down. So Stuart?
Yeah, can I suggest as we become a more affluent community, the demands of residents sort of rise to to meet the, you know, the increased capacity. So it doesn't doesn't get cheaper to live here, it just gets more and more expensive all the time as as wealthy and wealthier people have greater needs.
So a question for discussion and in terms of the balance between the tourist population and the the permanent population and what your thoughts are on that, like how how that impacts cost of living and finances and changes you've seen over time in terms of the the number of those, the tourist population increases and and how that impacts your operations.
Okay, who wants to start on that? Stuart?
Yeah, I think we are welcome tourism as a as a part of a healthy mix in our community. And it's just, you know, we probably have all our own individual perspectives on what that balance should be. You know, but but some of us have concerns that that might get out of whack. I mean, we do know, you know, Roslyn still feels like a community of residents with a, you know, a bit of tourism as a as a supplement to that. If if that tourism was to grow to the point where it dwarfed the permanent population, then it would have a completely different character in the community. And those of us that value it as it is would would not like that. So, you know, 13,500 beds feels like it would dwarf the the residential community.
Who else? Chen?
Sorry, I just adding another question sub to that. I just noticed that, yes, we we will pass our 15 minutes discussion, but this is really helpful discussion though, so let's maybe stand there for another few minutes. So my question is, yep, just based on, we had this, we have other projects that are related to some fiscal impact analysis in terms of growth. So some actual real numbers kind of showing that residential definitely is a little bit higher, actually more higher than to maintain compared to commercial and industrial development. So because residential, a lot of yeah, a lot of costs associated with that. And for industrial and commercial, they are a lot less expense. So many municipality use that as a tool, like to balance the residential and non residential tax base and also land planning that to kind of get them to lower down the tax to a certain level, just basically use the non residential tax income to help with residential expenses and all that. So it's obvious there, sorry. My question to to the board right now is, what type self economic development tax base that you are, you're thinking is fit into Roslyn? Like, so this is this is talking, I understand that the retail, just based on what we had discussed, retail seems not a not unlimited, this is this is certain market to fit into. So we're not kind of like just randomly to add more commercial space than we get more. That just doesn't work in that way. So in terms of industrial, we're not definitely not looking at any heavy industrial or any even middle level industrial, maybe be a business park or office. Somehow that types of use can fit into Roslyn that scenario. And also tourism is one of them. So I'm just curious about with the board is what types of non residential development that you think is more appropriate for Roslyn context?
Okay, so we have very limited land for commercial or light industrial. We we're limited there. So regardless of what we want, we don't have a lot of space for it unless we talk about boundary expansion, which I don't think we're talking about. But the the first question that we we only got one response on was about the tourist population versus the full time residents. So if you want to hear from the board on that, maybe we can have, when I call on each of you, you can talk about your feelings about tourism and then address Chen's question about what other kinds of of businesses we'd like to see. We have just struck an economic development task force for Roslyn of some people. And they're they're looking, you know, at at some of these ideas, they're just getting started. Okay, Andy, you had your hand up after Stuart. Stuart's already answered the tourism.
Sure.
Let's go around.
Okay, so, yeah, I think Stuart handled that tourism part and I would I would concur with what he had to say. As far as other commercial business or industrialization of some sort, you know, what we, the limited amount we do have has expanded recently. It's, you know, it's self storage, it's someone who's who's recognized the the market in in cannabis edibles, who who started to do some commercial expansion. It's a welding enterprise, fabrication welding shop that's doing quite well out there with with a small business venture. It's probably, it's going to be, again, very community based businesses that see a market locally. Again, because of space, I think they're not going to be able to expand much. And then, and as pointed out by Terry earlier, the retail will expand, I think, as demands noted and and what people are willing to take a chance. Retail is a tricky one. But, you know, I think I had I have a retail background as well. And it's, it's just, the market is so sensitive to to that. So I think that'll expand or detract relative to demand. And of course, home businesses. And we talked about the fact that during the pandemic, a lot of people are working from home. And I think that's going to be a reality for the next ever. I mean, it's it's likely not going to go back to what it was. So our community has benefited from a lot of young families moving into the community where people saw the opportunity to work remotely and expand their business, either independent businesses or they work for others, larger corporations that are that are in large urban centers and they can work remotely. So that's, you know, from a business venture standpoint, I think that's good growth for our community. And, you know, I think that's what we're likely going to continue to support and encourage here.
Great, okay, Chris has his hand up. I want you guys, we're going to have to move a little more quickly to keep on schedule here, but I want to hear from everybody. So, Chris?
Thanks, Kathy. I'm not convinced that that attracting home based businesses is a is going to help us in our economic landscape. I really like your point, Andy, about our light commercial area. And I think if there's an argument for any more boundary extensions, it would be towards expanding the light commercial area. I think that's what going to be our our largest opportunity for for commercial growth here. Retail is is saturated, there's nothing available. And each one of the retail stores are holding their own. They seem to be doing okay, especially in a in a climate like we have now. Tourism will always remain to remain our largest industry here until the ski hill goes away or people just decide to stop traveling for fun. I think it'll still be our our largest opportunity for for economic development here locally. So but I'm not convinced that that attracting home based businesses is is necessarily our right avenue.
Hey, thanks. Let's see, who hasn't spoken on this, Terry? And Dirk?
Yep, just thanks, Kathy. Yeah, I'd love to see that light, light industrial area continue to grow and infill out there. I think that's it's a key piece and provides some blue collar or some or some even some high tech work out there. And Chris, I guess I just, my only question there to you is what's wrong with home based businesses? So I'd love to hear what's different about that, that just to can hold that.
I don't think anything's wrong with it. I just don't think it's it's a future for, you know, trying to change our tax base here. I think our houses are going to be filled regardless. I think we need to, if we're talking about balancing our contribution to the city from a commercial level, I think we need to to actually have commercial.
Okay, Dirk and then Stu?
Yeah, I think, can everybody hear me? I got a note that my mic is not working, does better. Yeah, I I think tourism, as much as we sort of depend on it, but we've seen over the last year how risky that is. So I think tourism is kind of a nice icing on a really cool Roslyn cake. We've got bad snow ears or bad smoke or some other, I don't know, pandemic. So it's risky to build that into sort of a planned future. It's the icing. I I like the idea of an increase in the light industrial. I've seen that grow and I know there's demand for it. I don't know, there's empty properties out there, so it doesn't really need to expand at this point. And then I don't know what the options are for home based business. I mean, that's the I'm one and the the options to tax those differently. I don't know if that stands out or, you know, I don't want to get shot over that. But, you know, I think there are some options. It's a, it's a commercial enterprise, so.
Stu and then Janice?
Yeah, I just think remote workers are a really significant part of our of growth in our community. You know, and it's just the way of understanding the growth and changes we're we're seeing. You know, you know, prior to technology making it, you know, convenient to live here, Roslyn was a pretty remote place. And, you know, it was, we had a high quality of life, but it was very affordable because you had to make all sorts of sacrifices to be here. You couldn't buy things on Amazon, you didn't couldn't read the New York Times online. It was remote and it was cheap because of that. And every year, technology makes it easier and easier to live in these remote communities. And it's making it easier and easier for people to relocate their work here. And and, you know, without us attracting it, it's still happening and it's driving up the price of of real estate in town and and decreasing affordability. And I mean, we we are challenged because it doesn't increase our tax base in the same way that more traditional businesses would. But it's happening and it's going to continue to happen. And I, I, you'll be, I'm open to all sorts of ideas, how we can, you know, take advantage of it. But, you know, wishing it wishing it away is not going to change it. This is a trend that's happening and it's affecting our community in lots of ways.
Janice?
Okay, yeah, in terms of tourism, I think that, you know, tourism has actually been one of our largest economic drivers over the last 10 to 15 years. And not in, not in terms of salaries or economic money that's come into town, but actually in terms of people it's brought to town. So, you know, I always say that I came, I came to ski, but I stayed for the community. And, you know, what attracted me to actually move here was not because I was moving to a resort and it had great skiing, but because of the amazing community we have. So as far as economic development goes, you know, the challenge with tourism is as an industry is that it relies on people having disposable income. And so again, you know, it's attracting people with disposable income to come to visit. They see the great community, they move here, they have disposable income to start with. And so that sort of goes to Stu's comment about, you know, increasingly more affluent people moving into town. It provides the community with some great amenities and quality of life. It's not a really high paying, not a really high paying industry overall. So I'm with Dirk on the icing on our Roslyn cake. I think it provides us with a lot of really great amenities, great people come and visit us. But it's not necessarily something we need to rely on. As far as home based businesses go, even though it doesn't expand our tax base currently, what it does do is if we have people who are working at home, living in the community full time, it does increase our stability and sustainability. So they're here with their families, they're working. It doesn't change from a from a city economic development point of view, it doesn't change our tax base. But it does make the tax base we have possibly more stable. And then, yeah, I agree, you know, we we need to look at, we need to look at having some of those non residential, growing some of that non residential property revenues through taxation, whether it's through expansion or balancing our tax policies to help so to help support the residents that have been carrying the bulk of the bulk of the costs over time. So, you know, light industrial growth, light manufacturing, maybe consider rezoning some of our residential properties to more commercial type, commercial or light manufacturing in obtrusive things that wouldn't necessarily disrupt our neighborhoods. That would help to expand that base there.
Yeah, I I agree with Janice's comments there and certainly with the build out of the light industrial that we do have. You know, we do have some and as mentioned, it isn't fully subscribed yet and and it could be, which would, which would be great. The other thing, the home based businesses, yes, they do, they they contribute to the stability of the community, but they also provide customers for all our bricks and mortar shops. And tourism does that as well. I mean, you look at the shops in Roslyn and I don't think we'd have the variety of shops that we have if we didn't have tourists. So there has to be that balance. And I really appreciate Stu's comments, we don't want to be dwarfed by them. So there has to be that balance and we can do as much of that as possible through land use regulation. You know, that's probably the best, the best lever that we have. Okay. Yeah, and Andy comments with kids for the schools too, when you have the home based business people, which is, which is critical. We don't want to lose any more schools. Right now, our schools are overflowing. So that's, that's another problem. And 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 here's the other thing, we talked to the thought exchange people in the economic development task force thing and they were talking about they're a growing company that their people all work remotely and they actually don't require people to live in Roslyn anymore because people can't find housing. So those are families that are living somewhere else. Those are families whose kids are in other community schools and shop in other communities businesses, so.
Thank you very much. That was a, I was going to do a sum up, but I think between Janice and Kathy's comments, you both excellent orators and summarized that very well. So thank you very much for that discussion. If it's okay with everyone, I think we'll need to to move on to the the public engagement. So Chen will be zipping through that piece. Does anybody need a a short break or anything like that? Or is everybody okay?
Just get done so I can go skiing.
All right, well, enough said. All right, Chen, keep it brief.
Not a problem at all. So, so the rest portion is actually, it's a quick summary of what what we have done for the the preliminary survey and also what's going on with our PEP PAP, public engagement plan, and then also what's the next steps? So I would do a little bit more quick, yeah, quick conversation. Sorry, a quick introduction of what's happening with the preliminary survey. So let's let's do that, okay? So we do have actually receive a three, 335 response, which is about 20%, a little bit shy on 20% of the households, just based on the assumption that one person per household that will respond to this survey. So it's pretty good, it's pretty good considering it's preliminary. And then we'll have a more comprehensive survey coming up later. So that's in April. So anyway, we asked eight questions there. So the first one is basically a vision for Roslyn. So what we, how we come up this statistic number is is based on the keyword search of the open ended response and related to the numbers of times that particular word got mentioned. So 30 keywords were searched and then so as you see, this is a root affordability. Also, that's the always the top one. And then the small diverse, that's definitely sounds like is quite common feeling about Roslyn. Yeah, and then sustainable housing and that's all sort of hot topics there. Rachel, can you go to the next one? Yes, this is somehow similar, but it's different is what's the most important issue about OCP? Like, what what they think? So number one, the top five will be cost of living, taxation, and then parks and trail and growth management, housing and infrastructure. Yeah, surprisingly, that the full security was probably the, I think that's the least de-emphasized, got de-emphasized in the whole. uh, de-emphasized got, de-emphasized in the whole, whole discussion. Um, yes.
Well, I think I think what's what's important to mention is, you know, that so so Rosson is the the food charter from twenty seventeen. We've got a food security consultant, um, as part of the team. So while it's not, it's not a top of mind issue for most people as a priority area, the way housing affordability and recreation are. Um, it is linked to a lot of these things. So, uh, while it's not a priority item at this point, I think it's a good, um, you know, it might be one of those areas that can grow into those non residential, um, uses as well. So I don't want to write it off entirely, even though it's not, you know, a response from the general public as a priority issue.
I saw this a hands up there. Kathy?
Oh, right, Dirk, it looks like.
Yeah, just that uh, food security and community safety, safety are two of those things that we really take for granted until we don't have them. So it's a human nature and it's not looked that far. We've had that discussions before. So it's, yeah, important.
Totally agree.
Exactly.
It has to stay in there for sure.
Yeah, totally agree. Um, so this one is the this question, number three, specific issues that people wanted to highlight. Again, this affordability and housing. I want to mention it here that affordability, um, that's two key words actually associated with it when we do the search. So, uh, it's affordability plus cost of living. So we kind of combine those two words under, um, under affordability. So, uh, can we go to the next slide? So here, so that's that's basically is what's the topic that people want us to kind of uh, have more conversation about. So for development, for the second one, I understand that housing is always there and development is all showing up in combination of the words like economic, housing, community, um, or planning. So, uh, we combine those uh, as a development that people want to know how development, uh, explore there.
Interesting that taxes falls way down when they're here. You know, it's like, yeah, they they want to, they want lower taxes, but they really don't want to learn anything about what their taxes get them right now.
It it is curious that infrastructure is higher than than taxes. That's very, it's not typical, but.
Partly that's our community conversation. We've talked about infrastructure and asset management in Roslin for quite a number of years. So I think we've got our population somewhat conditioned to be thinking about that as as an issue, which I'm really happy to see. If you'd asked us that probably, you know, eight years ago or something, that it wouldn't have come up as high.
That's great. Got it. Yeah, let's go to next one. Yeah, what's the best way? So this is helping us to kind of put our uh, PAP like engagement plan together. So, uh, this is the best way that they feel like traditionally, you know, always online survey is the most popular one. And then goes to community events like open house and and that. So that's, that's actually also uh, already in our uh, planner anyway. And then the other one is informal pop up event with Roslyn, so CPA advisory committee members. Uh, we we somehow, we do have a few slides about that after this. Um, but just let you know that we kind of thinking about that and that will be our supplementary, um, uh, engagement activities. So let's go to the next one. So, yeah, the best way, that's also helping us to kind of trying to confirm that if what we are doing so far, uh, how we get to people. Sorry, Stu.
I just wanted to suggest that, um, doing online consultation and asking people how they want to be reached probably is going to bias them towards online consultation.
Good point.
Yes. Here we go. So, so the best way, uh, sorry, best way to keep.
There, there, there are some, there, there will be other, other mediums, of course, for.
I just, yeah.
Scattered, absolutely. No, I hear you.
Yeah, how we kind of make people be interesting and join the topic to discuss for sure. Okay, so, yeah, the best way to keep residents informed, that's really not a surprise, like, um, uh, Stacy helped us to, uh, for the newsletter part send it out and then this, um, newsletter, dedicated newsletter, that's definitely something and the postcard uh, that we kind of sending out in, uh, what's that, March? Uh, sorry, at the beginning of January, that seems they they are happy with that as well. Um, so that's a few. And then there's a website always, um, social media. Okay, uh, can we go to the next one? Here we go, um. This is another one we can laugh about. And this is also, we did that keyword search, that's where you come up with. So under COVID nineteen scenario, maybe hard to achieve with the food and snack. And what we'll see when we finish the draft, um, document and then, uh, there will be another run of communities, so which that will be, I believe that was after summer in the fall-ish, and we'll see how that goes in that, at that moment.
I think we we can look at some, some ways to maybe entice with food and snacks with, you know, COVID safety protocols. We'll try to figure something out. In that front.
Okay, that's next slide, please. Yep. Uh, yeah, again, this is something that, um, other, other themes, subthemes there. So don't want to be another Whistler and keeping a small town feeling. Uh, that's, we heard about it many times. Uh, manage, management, uh, manage the growth and education tax, uh, tax show up again. Uh, rental and housing for seniors. That's a, uh, that's another thing that we noticed that. Can we go to the next one? Um, so any questions? Sorry, any questions about what we just has discussed with uh, preliminary survey? Before we move on to the engagement plan.
I think it's great. You got three hundred and thirty four people to participate. You know, that was, that's good.
Sounds good. And hopefully we do, uh, we we will have more for the comprehensive survey because that would be something we really get into the meat of the OCP there. So, okay.
I want to make one comment, one comment that I read in the, in the, the all of the comments that people made. There were so many people who said, well, it was said, you know, do you want to be involved further or something? And they basically said, yes, I want to be more engaged. So we've already sort of seeded the field there, people who want to participate. And they were like, yeah, just let, just ask me kind of thing. So that was.
That's great. Yeah, I will. And I, we also like to enjoy that postcard, postcard that we sent out. It seems really getting people's attention.
Uh, Andy had had a question.
Just, just one other item, uh, suggestion there is is counselors, uh, standing at for hours and handing out prompts. It's been quite successful in the past when we made that effort.
Great. Write the video there. It's pretty good. Um, yeah, so, okay, so let's move on to the uh, PAP like engagement plan. So, uh, again, this is, this is a relatively high level documents that we kind of tailored saying how we going to communicate the message to the community and also, uh, the roles and responsibilities and point of contact for each, like the stakeholder and for each agencies and that have as they had a role in this OCP. Um, and then also the communication between uh, Roslyn and WSP is how we work together on that. Um, and also some, uh, in a primary, like the most important engagement activities and key messages. But this is just, um, I think the next slide. So the, the report, the plan itself is really about high level statement there and to confirm some roles and responsibilities. And the appendix A, I'm not sure if you really dig into that, is a list out for all the activities that uh, we will have, uh, in in this whole process. But I will have more slides. You you already kind of seen the slides then, uh, you will see there's a more detailed activities that we, uh, list out there in the other slides, the tables and charts. Can we go to the next one? Yes, key messages. Again, uh, it just some of the, this is key messages that we would like to deliver to the community and some examples is more, uh, about Roslyn as a city with rich history and heritage and that where people can play and enjoy the outdoor throughout the season. And then this, uh, also, uh, the city has conducted a lot of, uh, planning process, like the, a lot of studies uh, since two thousand and eight OCP that, uh, from your background report that you've you've seen that. Now, that was that like thirty, thirty, forty, uh, documents that we have been reviewing that. So it has been, it it's big success, I would say. Uh, really, uh, haven't seen that in other municipalities, I have to say. It's really good. Um, and then also there will be, uh, the OCP offers the opportunities for the community to look at the long term growth and sustainability and, uh, also future ready, like that whole, uh, climate change lands and all that discussion there. And then also this whole OCP process, uh, provide opportunities for the public to become more involved and share thoughts uh, in the next coming years. So this, there are more additional ma- uh, messages in the document, like the PAP that ad- address the nature of an OCP updates, deliverables such as branding, uh, as well as more, uh, process related info. So, uh, I won't just list out it here. Yeah. So, uh, for, we basically follow on this IAP two spectrums of public participation. Like for, for the whole project, we talking about, yes, we inform, we, uh, deliver uh, clear information to the, to the community and then, uh, provide the details. And we can look at this a fat sheets and also websites and open house. That's how we in inform people in this whole engagement activities and then consult, right? So consult that including the public comments, focus group, survey, stakeholder, uh, workshops and public meetings. That's, that's how we kind of deliver the message and then we try to, uh, get their feedback from people. And involve is more, um, about workshops and deliberative like polling, the live polling that we will have in the workshop. So it's just try to work directly with the public throughout the, uh, process to ensure the public issues and concerns are understood and considered and incorporate into the uh, preparation of this OCP. Uh, in terms of the other two, uh, other two category in the spectrum, the collaborate and empower, uh, we normally will see that more after we create a document. Then there will be further implementation on some of those, uh, policies and strategies. That's where that collaboration and inco- empower will will be in place in that. Sorry, next slide. So this basically, uh, this is just a two category that we're trying to kind of summarize what the PAP activities, like engagement activities that we planted out. So there's some activities with stakeholder and some activities with the public. So stakeholder focus group on the key, uh, OCP topics. And then there will be also workshops with advisory committee. Uh, and also there's another visioning workshop. Uh, this one, uh, is most likely with council as the key stakeholders. Uh, so we will come to you, I believe by the end of March, um, sorry, sometimes in April, the end of March, April-ish that will, that's almost to, uh, the end of the engagement, uh, activities that so in that workshop that we would like to kind of let you know what we heard so far and also understand more issues about visioning and is the key stakeholder involved will be, uh, council on that as and key staff. So that's the, that's the workshop. On the public side, um, is, yes, we will have a another round of survey. Uh, and then this will be a other, uh, uh, this around about public open house launch event, uh, idea fairs, roundtable, uh, sections about each OCP topics. And then after we've, uh, we had a draft the, uh, OCP, then there will be another, uh, community event for the community to, uh, understand what we dropped and then understand, uh, and then provide their comments. So that would be a, that would be in the fall. So that's for the public one. Yep, thank you. So this is a little bit more detail about what we are looking at in the, what we have done so far and what we are looking at for the right, uh, for the next steps there. So in March, we're, uh, we're scheduling stakeholder focus group. And then there will be another workshop with, um, uh, advisory committee about affordability and growth options will be quite similar to what we had discussed uh, today about those questions and then definitely with a lot of the further details. So for example, uh, okay, if we want to kind of confirm that we might need some growth, then where is the most appropriate place for new growth and infill and a greenfield development that types of discussion? So we'll get further on that.
Look, Chen, I'll just interject for, I think we'll, we'll take a lot of the comments that were discussed today and obviously that's work that into to what we present to the the city and advisory committee on that topic.
And, uh, honestly, so what we have discussed today, what we heard today will definitely help us to tailored, uh, further questions going to advisory committee about growth. So we we believe we got a general, uh, guidance there, direction there that we can build on more questions about it. For, for example, like, uh, land use, how, how, how we are going to plan the land use to facilitate the growth. Um, that's, that's one of the, uh, and also infrastructure. I know we didn't touch a lot about infrastructure today, but infrastructure is it's a big ticket item. And you would also say, what types of infrastructure do we are looking at? New infrastructure? Uh, are we going to up, uh, upgrade what we have so far? And what's the plan there? So that's also the topic attached asset management. Uh, but anyway, I won't go to too far about that, but I just hope that if you are interesting and feel free to join us for that discussion. And also, uh, in sorry, I, uh, could you go back to that as well? Thank you, Rachel. Um, in April, there will be, uh, yeah, the the survey, the, the long, the more comprehensive survey, uh, will be released to the public in, uh, later. And then, uh, engagement launch, yeah, the the big, uh, engagement launch, open house will be also happening in April. So in May, we talk about what kind of summarize our, uh, what we heard report. And the supplementary, uh, engagement most likely, uh, like with AC committee, most likely will, uh, happen in April because we, at the end of March, we probably have a lot clear idea is what topics that we want uh, our advisory committee to help us with in terms of like a supplementary, uh, uh, event. What we talk about some, um, pop up stance and also IPi kiosk, kiosk and that type of idea. Okay, um, yeah, in May that, um, we will have our what we heard report and then visioning report. So the visioning report is more about our recommendation and based on what we heard and our recommendation to the, uh, OCP. Um, so we will have another presentation to you after that, after we develop that report. So the key recommendation will goes to the OCP there. And also growth option is one of the com- uh, part of the component of that report as well. Yeah, so that will be further after we draft the development and, uh, sorry, after we draft the OCP, we'll go to the public for, uh, engagement that will be in fall. Um, okay, uh, can we go further? I think I just have a very few slides there then. Yeah, this is just, uh, we, we talk about COVID.
So, yeah, so that's all right. So this one's the, uh, the community engagement, as Chen said, will be conducted online, March to April. Um, the advisory committee, we've got some plans for supplementary on the ground engagement events. So, uh, the vision tree on the right side of the screen is an example. So that could be placed somewhere in town. And, uh, you know, we'll, we'll have people using stickies or some other, other formats to, to put their ideas up. And so, uh, trying to get a bit, you know, creative with iPad kiosks and things like that, the ideas that the advisory committee came up with. Um, so we can go to the next one.
The rest of the slide, just further details. I think we kind of, if we're pressing in time, we can just quickly go skip, uh, this few slides there is how we kind of schedule for the next two months about the detail workshops and, um, yeah. And this is also kind of repetitive. The, uh, this is the next step for the, uh, for March and April. I believe that's the last slide we have. And any questions, comments? And any questions, comments?
Counsel, anything? It was a very good presentation. Thank you. I think everyone feels way more informed than they were before. Does anybody have anything else for the consultants right now? No, Chen, thank you very much. We really appreciate your time and come back to us with any questions that you have. If you want full counsel feedback, we're always willing to help.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much, Kathy and all the counselors appreciate it and discussion was very good. So your time's valued. Thanks.
Now, we're gonna take a ten minute break. Stuart, did you, did you want to raise your hand? Were you raising your hand? No.
I was just waving goodbye.
Ah, okay, only for ten minutes. We will reconvene for the financial plan. Thank you guys so much.
Okay, have a great, have a great ski day and weekend. Thank you. Bye.
Well, thank you very much. Yes, it was great to put this together. It was a lot of work, but I think it really showcases, you know, everything that Roslyn is achieving, all in, all in one spot, you know? So this plan is different from previous years in that it not only provides information according to the community charter that you see on your screen there, but it also tells a story that incorporates the strategic plan that's woven into the many layers of the organization. And once we add the management work plan that you'll see on Monday, it will even be more so. So this provides an all encompass, all encompassing view of the plan at work, including the financial health, which is something I'm always interested in. I loved pulling out those ratios over the last 10 years just to see where we, where we stand. Talked about asset management and, and some facts on environmental sustainability. And many times this information is presented at different times throughout the year. But I think the financial plan is a great spot to put it, so it's all in one place, especially for the public who maybe don't tune in all the time. And if they wanted to see a broad picture of the organization, they could turn to this document and it would give them a comprehensive overview and, and where their tax dollars are being spent. So it's not just numbers on a page anymore, but there's qualitative data behind those numbers to show how their money is being used. So moving on to the next slide, so I'm just going to use the, the report as the slide deck so that we can just follow along rather, because I ran out of time. I don't have time for proper slide deck. So I'll just use the report this year. So that might be different next year. Next year, there might be a slide deck. Okay, and, and you know, and from this point on, you know, now that the bones are here, we could, you know, we can make it more pretty, just like, you know, Cynthia did with the strategic plan. You know, before it was just a lot of words on the page and she made those words jump out at us, right? And so really our financial plan could take more of that characteristic as well. But at least here we have the bones and we can, you know, we can develop it from here. So this is a quick snapshot, it's pretty small that you have, you can always expand the view if you want to. The changes to the operating expenditures. And I'm not sure if you want me to review the highlights, so you know, a lot of the changes are reflected. They reflect inflationary changes or, you know, labor increases. Some of them are.
If you could, if you could reflect the highlights and then if council has anything specific, they can raise their hand. And then we don't have to go through it line by line, but just hit the highlights.
Sure. Yeah, that makes sense. So, yeah, so like I said, you know, the big thing on the general government is the insurance increases. Information technology is going up a bit, just you're buying some new equipment that will help identify more of our assets that we're working on this year. Then there's some, you know, environmental health is down just because of those, those Hugo methods that reduce transportation and disposal costs. If, you know, obviously if we run out of room for that, then those costs will increase again, but at least not this year. And planning and development, a lot of those costs revolve around the O C P. Protective services, a lot of that budget is a hundred percent grant funded with U B C M and, and C V T. And we put out an R F P for the webpage updates. That's part of, that'll be funded by COVID funds. And then let's see here. Sewer operations is just down, that's really, you know, an accounting thing. That has to do with the requisition from the R D K B, R D K B or the sewer utility. And if we over collect, then we put that into a reserve. And just a small change on interest. So is there questions on this operating side?
I don't see any.
Okay. So just moving on to the next slide is, I put in here the, the non-market change for the exemption class and for the inventory. It's a lot of numbers there, but those are the numbers that I use to calculate on the tax rate scenarios. And I just wanted to show you that there was actual documentation to back those things up.
I had one weird little question on those things. What is the, there's a five million, I can, I can barely read the thing on this thing, but.
Yeah, that's not, that's not included. It's, I had a funny feeling you might ask me about that. That's, and I can't, I don't have the exact explanation for it, but you, it's something you exclude in your assessment base.
Oh, okay.
When you're doing your calculation. It has something to do with the, the, the province, but I just don't have it on the tip of my.
Okay, just was, it just didn't jump out as something I could understand.
No, it's something that I always have to ignore because if, and so, because if I would include it, I would get the tax rates wrong.
Okay.
So I'm. I can let you know specifically on that later on.
Okay, well, it's idle curiosity.
Yes, yes, yes. So on page sixty-six, unless there's more questions on the non-market change.
Okay.
This shows the, just the breakdown of revenue by funding source. A big change this year is just the provincial grants. So I've built into the budget, if we were successful on all the grants, this is what the revenue scenario would look like. Just, it's so significant this year that, and you know, we have to leverage a lot of those funds. Was just important to show that it was all manageable and, and, yeah, that all the numbers worked out.
Yes, Janice.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, is that, that's percentage of total revenue, not percentage of total budget? Or they're the same thing?
No, that's just percentage of revenue.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and we already know that we haven't gotten some of those grants, right? Like the one we went for with the restroom, but was this at the total that we'd applied for?
Yeah. And then as, you know, when I present it again, and if we know for sure that some of those aren't awarded, you know, they'll just drop from a future draft, you know, or if we do, like, we already know, you know, like about half of the grants, like half of the projects, so there's total of fourteen million in capital projects. Half of that we already know is moving forward. And, you know, of the other seven million that's out there that we aren't for sure on, we already know now in this last week or two that one million is going ahead. We're quite confident that another one point five million is going to be approved. And so, you know, those are just, they're, they're big numbers, right? You want to make sure you have the financial capacity to, to carry it all.
Yeah. And do you have any concerns about that?
Or you? No, it's looking really good. I've been, you know, I've been, while I was doing this, I was also working on the year end. And when I prepare the financial statements, I get a pretty good idea of where we are, you know, with our unrestricted surplus, whether we dipped into that or, you know, whether we've added to it. And it looks like we've added to it for twenty twenty, just because we, there's ongoing projects. And then that always makes it carry forward. So, you know, things are looking really good.
Great.
And you'll see that in the reserves too, even though we're dipping, we're dipping into the reserves. You know, if you look at it over five years, you can see that it does slowly build up again. And then the next slide, we've got just the operating expenditures over the next five years. Just a quick snapshot there for what we knew. And it does fluctuate a bit just depending on, you know, on what, on what we know is going to happen and like in twenty twenty-one. And then moving on to financial policies on page sixty-nine. Just as a summary of what will be included in the, in the tax rate bylaw. This is always included. And so last year, council asked that we move the tax rate multiplier for the business class. And also later on in the year, just that, just put into words that growth would pay for itself. And so that non-market change that we saw being calculated for this year, I calculated that the same way last year based on the B C assessment reports.
Carrie has a question.
Yeah.
Elma, can you give me a little color on environmental health? Again, I know I read it somewhere, but remind me what that is.
Environmental health? Oh, oh. That was on the, on the expenses.
Expenditures.
Sorry, I may have missed his hand up there.
Okay, so that's, that's garbage and cleanup.
Okay, thanks.
That's predominantly, yeah, one of those, those two things, some vegetation expenses in there as well.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Waste management is the proper term, not garbage.
With either, we're flexible.
Brian's the wordy guy, not me. Okay, so.
Carrie, are you still up? Okay, thanks.
Okay, so if, you know, if for some reason, you know, council did not want to, if council decided, well, growth shouldn't pay for itself, we want, you know, to pass that savings on to the existing taxpayers, then, then we should include that here, right?
So. So I want to make a comment on, on that for council. Like this is a committee, the whole meeting, which is, we don't do motions, but we do do recommend, recommendations. So as, as we've gone through this report, if any of you have recommendations that you would like council to consider passing at our next council meeting, you could make that, you could make that resolution today if you want to change anything. So if you wanted to change any of these policies, now would be a good time to, to suggest that change. And Brian has his hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly say that this is a, this is a draft budget still. So any direction that we get from this committee, from this meeting, you will get re, put, put back into the financial plans when we look at it at the, the next regular meeting, which will probably be the first meeting of April, because we're going to come back for first reading the bylaw. All that stuff will be included in that. So this is still a work in progress.
Yeah, yeah. But if we want to give any direction, now's a good time. Okay, carry on, Elma. I don't hear anybody wanting to make any recommendations right now. We like our policies.
So next page. This just gives you the budget timetable. So it's important just to let people know when we're, when we're doing things. And the next slide, and on page seventy-one and seventy-two, just show you the, the balance budget where all the revenues and transfers and expenses come into play. Are there any questions here?
I have a little question, and this is just a sort of a clerical thing. I put the top in the header, what does the little two, three and four mean?
With two, three, oh, yeah, I see what you mean. Well, that's because it's a, it's set up as a table. And when you put in two point five more than once into that cell, it labels it a different way.
Okay, all right. So it means nothing to us. That's mechanics for you. That's fine.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll make a note to change that though, because it is confusing.
Wow, it was curiosity, not really confusing.
Okay, good. Okay, any other comments on this? So, I don't know, the, a big thing sometimes that's, well, people look at amortization, you know, because you're not really, it's a non-cash expense, right? But so now that's an estimated amortization on all our assets. And what, what it really is, is we use that to fund back into capital expenditure. And so even though you see, if you're about halfway down there, you see that line for capital expenditure, it's fourteen million in twenty twenty-one. And it's a lot lower in the next years. It doesn't mean, these are known projects that we're doing. And if we're not spending that money on capital expenditures, then it's going into reserves. Okay, so it's not like it's being spent on, you know, operating whatever, it'll flow back in so that when we do need it for, let's say, grant project or, you know, something comes up, you know, we can pull on it from our, from our reserves. And I could add too, at this time, that while we're adding in, you know, one point eight for capital, you know, we should actually be, if we were to hundred percent fund the replacement of all our assets, we should be funding a lot more than one point eight million, right?
Balance, that was that balance that we were trying to, to talk.
That's actually on the next page, on page seven-three. Look at all flows. I wonder, anyway, so, yeah.
Before we go on, Andy's got a question.
Okay.
So you just mentioned, Elma, asset management and, and the balance there. So as our asset management becomes more clear and defined, our reserves will change relative, correct?
Yeah, if we are, if we keep on track with our tax revenues, yeah, and funding programs, right?
Right, right. So I mean, the, the need for reserve is, is to plan forward for, for replacement of infrastructure. So just, just to know that, I, I'm just wanting, I, I know this is the plan, is the intent is to get a better idea of our, our assets and their lifespan and life cycle, et cetera, and then manage replacement and calculate that all out over the years. So that we're in a better, better position when it comes to replacements and taking advantage of grants and stuff too. But I know the challenge right now, regional district, for example, is, is not being in a place yet where our asset management, we don't have enough information to understand how much reserves are, you know, important to keep in, in the, in a budget and, and to keep back. So I'm looking forward to the, you know, I guess you never, you never can plan for everything, but, but at least to know that our plan process is at a place that we have a really good idea of what, how much money to continue to hold on to and plan, that'll, that'll be held in reserves so that, that projects can come up and, and we're in a position to replace.
Well, we're going to get to some more slides on. Well, we're going to get to some more slides on that, that, that shows our level of confidence and all of that when we, when, when we get there.
Good, okay, thank you.
Well, like, these numbers here that you see in front of you, they were numbers that were provided by the consultant, uh, a few years ago. And, um, what Barry's been working on is, uh, looking at our assets that we have in our asset register. And we have a replacement cost for those that we got from the consultant. And seeing, and then comparing, uh, what we have in our asset register. Um, and if we come close to these numbers. So that's what we're working on right now. Um, so what we provided in this plan was just on, um, on the health of our assets, like at what state they are in, uh, as to their useful life. Um, and then, but also along with that, we're looking at, when do they need to be replaced? And, and so we're trying to get some more confidence in that data, um, before we rely on it. Um, so it's just, it's a work in process. But yeah, that is the, that is the goal, and that is part of the reason why we're hiring that co-op student, uh, in the summer, uh, to help, you know, get, get more assets into the registry on the storm side, because we noticed that there's some gap, uh, some gaps there. And then, you know, as for, you know, do you want to a hundred percent fund, you know, all your future assets? Like, that's not really responsible either. Like, people, people should be paying now for the assets that they're using. They shouldn't have to also pay for the assets that somebody is going to use thirty years from now, like, you know, I'll be dead by then. Why should I be paying taxes on something that, that, that they're going to use then, right? So it's about finding a balance between, um, all those numbers. And also, there's, you know, right now, there's grant funding. There might not always be grant funding, but you would hope that you would use a combination of your reserves, um, use grant funding and debt to, to, uh, to replace your assets. That's the, those are the three things that you need. So once we have more confidence in the actual replacement, uh, value of the assets and what we need, um, then we can use those numbers to develop a longer-term financial plan that goes out, you know, twenty-five to fifty years, but doesn't just look at uh, operating expenses and reserves, but also looks at our statement of financial position. And that's where those ratios come in that I gave you before. So we have like that debt ratio, and then we have those, um, those financial health ratios, and you would use that and use those ratios, build out your statement of financial position into the longer term. And then try to find the right mix between debt and reserves, um, and, and your, um, grant funding, right? What you need, what's the optimal mix you need there to keep your ratios in line? I don't know if that makes sense, but like, that's how you would look at a long-term financial plan. And we're not there yet, but that, those are best, um, uh, best practice asset management, uh, considerations. And then the other, uh, thing that you need to look at here is with the council choice of thirty-seven and a half percent, like extending them. Oh, well, we're going to go with this number here, extend our, uh, life of our assets by, you know, thirty-seven and a half percent. But what that also does is it increases your risk, right? So then, uh, you're going to be, um, the, you're going to have disruption of service potentially. You're going to have emergency callouts, you're going to have overtime. You're going to have increased maintenance costs. So maybe not for every asset, but, um, there, this doesn't talk about the risk of going into that longer term, right? But that risk definitely is there.
Yeah, but, but that was the conversation that we had a number of years ago, was saying you, you strike that balance between like having no risk at all and having too much risk, and that's why council chose that thirty-seven and a half percent, because we felt that that was a tolerable risk, like we're willing to have some callouts and some overtime, but not all the time, right?
No, and that's why, like, now we're starting to, uh, we want to measure those callouts and those emergencies and know where they're happening, right? And so that's why we have started to track that data. And, um, and then that'll give us information on, you know, which areas are at a higher risk than others, because depending on the type of ground that, uh, infrastructure is in, has a effect on how that asset performs.
Yeah, and staff could always come back to council and recommend a different, uh, scenario, right? With different, with different numbers, if we feel we've been too conservative or too aggressive.
Yeah, yeah. It's just, I just wanted to say that, you know, it's, when we look at these numbers, that there is that risk component as well. It's not, I didn't write it in here, but I just wanted to bring attention to that. Because not, not everybody was there at that meeting when we talked about.
I, I think it was the previous council, in fact, wasn't it? I think, I think it was probably just Andy and I were there, so.
Yeah.
The concept is good, right? If the service life is, we'd be investing three point seven million dollars every year to, if we just went with service life, and we're trying to make our, our assets sweat a little bit by pushing them a little farther, that's, that's where those numbers came from. Stuart.
Yeah, I mean, if we had perfect information, we'd be able to calculate exactly the most efficient time to replace everything, but we, we don't have that yet.
That's right.
Okay, so, um, the next page, I've got a priority table. This is new. Um, there are just so many projects, I thought it would be helpful to categorize them. So that's someone who was looking at it maybe for the first time. Um, they might understand that, you know, not all capital projects are equal. You know, some are definitely more important than, than others. Um, not that you would want to, you know, they're all important, but they do have different levels of, uh, priority. And then the next, um, slide there is just, this is a question council often asks about our liability servicing limit. So I thought that would be helpful to have in the plan. So you can see that that's moving in the right direction and within, uh, the policy framework. And, um, and then let's go to page, um, were there any questions? Then going to page seventy-six. Well, I just included some of these, um, some of these ratios. I included, uh, quite a few of the ratios that presented the financial statements.
Uh, Elma, your voice is breaking up just a little bit.
Yes, the clock here. Excuse me, one second. Carrie? Carrie? Uh, I included a lot of these ratios, um, in, uh, it, when I presented the financial statements in, um, last year. And so I thought it'd be helpful to include just a few of these in the financial plan. Uh, so you can see the trending over time. I think they, they all look quite good. Uh, there, is there any, um, remnants on any of the next few?
I had, I had one question on condition. What were the options? Is it, it's, there's one that's fair, the rest are good. Could it be super excellent, excellent, terrible, disastrous, or what's, what are, what's the range that you judge by?
Oh, yeah.
As good, should we be happy with good?
Yeah, I think good is, uh, is like, I think there's, uh, five levels, and that's probably the, you know, that's probably the second highest from the top. Yeah. And they're, they're subjective, right? Like, um, if you had a policy, okay, that addressed where you wanted these levels to be, right? That would be like next level, right? You decide, uh, as a council, well, what are we happy with? What, what do, what are our goals, right? Um, then you could define those ratios with the different conditions, how council would perceive them, right? It's, um, but we don't have that. So I, they're subjective. There's, you know, it looks good to me. Um, and that's why I included, you know, what, what's the indicator story? And what's a healthy indicator? And what's a warning indicator? And if I saw that it looked healthy, I thought, well, that's good, you know? If it's somewhere in between, well, maybe it's fair, right? Fair is kind of middle of the room. So that's, it's based on, it's just a one-word condition on what the healthy in, healthier warning indicator is telling you.
Uh, Terry has a question.
Elma, so, uh, yeah, this graph, um, access to liabilities, uh, is, is certainly pointing in the right direction. Is that, is that just a, uh, a consequence of us paying down debt? I was, you know, looking down, I mean, we're still paying down Columbia and, um, Washington, right? Uh, most of it. So why is this thing ticking up like that or, or getting that much longer?
Yeah, that's exactly right, right? We're paying off debt. We don't have a lot of debt. You could see that with the liability servicing limit. Um, we have quite a bit of money in reserves, right? So that's what's putting it in a net, uh, in a, in a healthy uh, net asset position. There's lots of municipalities who are in a net debt position, where it's below the, uh, you know, it's below that one number. And, um, and it could be that all of a sudden, they, they've taken on debt, um, you know, for a big project. It doesn't, debt isn't necessarily a bad thing. It's just debt has to be managed. It's like me taking a mortgage out for my house. You know, that makes more sense than me renting in the long term, right? And that's kind of how you have to look at, uh, debt within a municipality as well. It just, it's not a bad thing, but you should, it should be managed, right? So you're, you're right in saying, yeah, it's a little bit because of the Washington and we're paying it, we're paying it down, Washington, Columbia.
Yeah, and, and the fact that our res, our reserves are growing as well, that, that affects that graph as well, is that right?
And that's exactly right, because that, um, all those reserves are being held in, in cash and securities, right, in your assets.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Twenty-twelve also represents where we did Columbia with no grant money, right? So we had, took on a lot.
Yeah. Okay. Um, so let's go to page eighty. And this just shows our trending, uh, over time in capital investment. Twenty twenty-one is, it'll be interesting here, see what happens there. And then we go into the next page, uh, some of the asset condition based on remaining life that Barry, uh, spent working on. Just to give council a snapshot of what the condition is. And then that gray, uh, bar in behind, I really wanted to include, um, like, some things are definitely estimated in the asset register. And I didn't think it was right to just show the condition based on, uh, remaining life, because some of it is not, is not accurate, right? Now, so that's why we include that percent confidence. And then that hope is that, you know, okay, this is an area we have to work on or pay attention to, but it should change and become more positive over time.
I think those are excellent charts, and including the percent of confidence really gives us a lot of information too. So that's super.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, without that, you think, oh, wow, okay, we know exactly. But the truth is, is we don't know exactly. And by doing that, by integrating that percent confidence, that's what brought my attention to, um, you know, the storm, the storm line assets, right? Which is the, on page eighty-three.
Stuart has a question.
Yeah.
Just on that graph we were just looking at, um, and the confidence. I mean, that's confidence over the overall. I mean, presumably, we have a lot of confidence of the infrastructure that's been replaced recently. And we probably have very low confidence about stuff that, you know, is potentially in poor condition and we haven't assessed. Is that seventy, that seventy percent is an overall calculation of our confidence, or is it supposed to, am I reading this incorrectly and it applies only to the, to the less well-assessed things?
No, it's overall. It's overall. So we replaced a lot of, uh, assets, right, with Columbia and Washington and Spokane. Right, so those, you know, that's really increased our confidence in those areas, but it's over, it's overall, and a lot, some of it, we just won't know, right, until the ground is dug up and replaced.
But don't we know some of it from the cambering that's been done? So even though we, we may, we, we have, we're, you know, we're seventy-two percent confident in this assessment, because some of those pipes we've looked at, even though they might be in the, in the poor category, we know they're poor.
Yeah, I don't know how much of that Barry has, uh, updated, whether he's integrated that into the, into the G I S or not.
Okay.
But. And is this also based on age of the actual infrastructure? That is, that's a sort of a guess of it, just knowing that, you know, we have water lines that are eighty years old still under some streets?
Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, if it was eighty years ago, um, do, you know, we're guessing at what that material of that, of that, um, you know, pipe is made of. Um, or, you know, it's just more estimation the older it gets, right? They have paper records, but they're not, you know, computers. Yeah. Uh, any other questions? Okay. And then I included, uh, section, uh, eighty-four on, uh, environmental sustainability. All just to give some, um, information on, on the things that the city has been doing and, and then giving in the appendices, uh, just some uh, information that comes from the care reporting. So we, you know, we report, um, all our energy into their, it used to be called smart tool, it's called C G R T now. So all those graphs that I included on how much energy we're using, they all come from, uh, that tool. And I, I kind of just dumped, um, it all into the report without any explanations. Uh, just, just because time was a factor, but I thought that it might be interesting for, um, for you to look at and, uh, and then, you know, as time grows by, we can, um, we can add more commentary on the things that we're doing, uh, in different facilities or in fleet, to address those areas.
I think it's great to include that, especially since we're trying to get the hundred percent renewable goal, you know, plan. So it's good to have that, especially if we can get some of the public to, to look at the report. You know, to look at the plan, financial plan.
Yeah, yeah, we, you know, we do a lot of inputting, but, uh, well, some of it's automated. But then we never show what we get out of it, right? So it's nice to, it's nice to include some, uh, information. I mean, just, uh, Stacy was looking at it, um, the other day, uh, and, um, with some work she was doing, and she noticed that the water treatment plant, uh, natural gas was a lot higher, and it made her ask, you know, the guys there, hey, how come your natural gas is this much higher? And I say, oh, we, we need to talk to Scott about this thing that's going on. I don't, I don't remember what it was, but, you know, by having that communication through the organization, because we can identify areas, uh, that maybe we, you know, there you go, full furnace, identify areas that need to be addressed, right?
Perfect. In the conference I was in yesterday, the siloing about climate change, that's one of the things they talked about, was the importance of cross-depart, departmental communication. So that's a great work, real world example of it working.
Yeah, exactly. No, okay, and then, um, glossary, just odd information. And then we've got, um, the tax scenarios. So this is where, uh, I could use some direction on where you want to go. Uh, we can look at the capital budget now if you want to, or we could talk about tax, uh, scenarios now or later. Uh, we can look at the capital budget now if you want to, or we could talk about tax uh, scenarios now or later.
Um, you know, your choice, I, I think, I think that's fine. Does council have any preference?
Okay.
One reflects the other?
No, well, why don't I get my thing over and done with and then you can uh, talk about what you want to do. Why don't we jump to, jump to um, page. Ninety six. So what I did here, this is a listing of all the capital projects and uh, just a quick summary of what they are. And if they're in blue, uh, we're waiting to hear from the funding source, whether they're approved or not.
I, I had a question on that, um, was that, you know, I'm wondering if all of the discretion or most of the discretionary. Um, projects should be contingent on grants. I know these are ones we've actually applied for, I guess. But I'm wondering if those other ones, just to sort of separate them out from the things that we really need to do. Is that we, that we say, well, if it's discretionary and we don't have other source of funding lined up for it. We should really focus on getting grants for those things or, or maybe not proceed with them, just as a thought. Don't know what anybody else thinks about that.
Well, there's not that many that are discretionary. You know, it's basically um, the museums, skate park and uh, the tennis courts that are discretionary. Uh, we put money aside specifically for the tennis courts over the last few years, based on a council motion, a lot of that. Whether that's going to be enough money or not remains to be seen. And the Rossin Museum, well, it contributed about thirty thousand dollars towards that project. But a lot of it's funded by, by tech and then we're just waiting to hear about the rest for the um. On the grant portion, I think the museum has put aside capital uh, fund money for that as well.
Is the skate park that talks about um, funded by community and donations, is that money they have in hand or are they fundraising for that?
Well, it's money we have in hand. We get people, the community is very pro Yan.
Yeah.
And so they uh, have open pockets. So every once in a while I receive, you know, envelopes of money that's specifically for, for the Yan.
You're not dealing on the side, are you Alma?
No.
Envelopes of money, that sounds suspicious.
Sometimes feels a little odd, but um, but yeah, so that goes into a separate, a separate fund, you know, because, yeah. So that's what that is.
Okay. Good.
And, and the Yan, um, you know, the skate park features, that was identified uh, by the Yan. Um, Yan people or Yan surveys, that that was a, a top priority item, right?
Okay, Andy has a question.
Uh, can, in this chart, a bit of confusion could, I could see is that uh, we don't. Mention the contribution of the city of those discretionary projects. So it kind of looks like, oh, that's project is a city project and it's going to cost the city two point two million dollars. And, and I'm wondering that final uh, box there on the right. Can we put in, you know, that, what our contribution would be towards that project? Again, just to provide more information for public.
Yeah, it's a little uh, uh, cumbersome. I think like that's why on the individual sheets, like for each one of these lines, there's a specific sheet. Um, that tells you the justification behind the project and where that money is coming from. And uh, sometimes I'm a little bit challenged by space, right? Because uh, so I needed to break out the information uh, in. Uh, you know, in different schedules, if that makes any sense. It's a good idea what you have there, but um, I would run out of room.
Yeah, yeah, because like the museum outbuildings, that ninety eight thousand, that was basically from insurance, wasn't it? That's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I see Andy's point, because if a member of the public is looking at this and they're going through, oh, my tax dollars for this, my tax dollars for that. And, you know. But yeah, we understand the need for space too.
Yeah, it's, you know, you want a snapshot of what that fourteen million is uh, for. But if you really, if you're really interested in knowing, you need to go down into the detail. Because it's not just one source, right? I'm dealing with, I'm dealing with, you know, many sources.
Right.
Not just, not just the one.
Terry has a question?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, point of clarification back to the Yan. So, so do we, did somebody come up with an envelope filled with ten thousand dollars? Or is that's the price of the project or what was the, what was the community donation? Uh, that, that we have in hand so far? Is it close?
Yeah, the community uh, donation is almost ten thousand dollars. I rounded it up uh, just because. Um, ten thousand is the um, is the capital threshold for the GCA policy.
So, yeah, uh, so, yeah, back, thank you, back to Andy's point. Um, uh, yeah, I'd love to see this. Um, to me, that sounds now like it's a required thing. Like if it's a ten thousand dollar project and somebody gave us ten thousand dollars, it, it, it feels to me like it falls out of the. Category of discretionary, but, and again, so that's one comment. And the second would be that, um, yeah, i- if, if that's from donated money. Um, again, I'd love to see, like Andy said, uh, a note that says, um, you know, cash reserves from donation or something, I don't know. But I, I, I hear your point about the, the devils in the, in the details later, but uh, from a visual standpoint, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think it would be, then I would take this schedule out completely. Um. You see, if you look at page, you know, if you look at page uh, fifty one, if you go to fifty one, page fifty one. Or even just saying, um, please refer to page fifty one. Oh, sorry, hundred and one, sorry about that. Okay, this tells you the funding sources of all of the capital. But the problem is, is that this doesn't show you the description, right? So like it's, you know, there's only so much room, right? So.
Yeah, maybe having that reference on at the top of that, or to say, go look for the details or something. I'm going to call on Christie and then Stu.
Um, I think maybe there was a little misunderstanding about that donation money for the Yan Skate Park. It, it is discretionary funds. It was donated in, in kind of bits and bobs over a couple of years. Through things like the um, um, what is it? Uh, Ski Bum Bingo and things like that, or, or the tip jar at the brewery. And then it got to a large enough amount that it was, um, you know, Alma's sort of saying, okay, you need to start spending this. So we actually approached the Yan, um, because the skate park had been identified as one of their priorities. Um, and asked Polly to check in with the youth to see if they would want to use those funds for some of those street features. But it wasn't an identified project that people donated where the funds have to go to that. It was discretionary.
Yeah, okay, thanks for the clarification, Stuart.
Yeah, I don't like the way it's conflating core city operations with, you know, these things where we're acting like a flow through for these groups. You know, I mean, I appreciate that, you know, the museum's on city property, but this is a museum initiative with funding from other sources. And having it all sort of mixed in together, I, I prefer these sort of, sort of arms length things. Were all sort of broken out and identified in a separate way. This makes it look like it's, you know, core to our functioning and it, it just isn't.
Alma, do you have a comment on that?
Well, you know, when you build, it's, it's going to, it's an asset that's going to belong to the city. Okay, so let me, if we use the museum, and it's important to show, because. Um, you know, we're responsible for that asset. If we build, if we, you decide to build onto it, then there's, that's going to come, there's going to be additional cost in future years. I'm not sure, like, you know, same with the skate park, you, you put money into the, into, you know, building the features of the skate park. Well, you know, that's another thing that kind of goes into your own capital and something that has to be maintained. And uh, you know, maybe labeling them differently or, you know, we could separate them out. So they're on a separate page, maybe, but they all come into the city capital.
Especially for the maintenance stuff, operations and maintenance part of it too, right? Once it's, once it's ours, it's ours. Okay, any more questions on these uh, sheets we've got here? Comments?
No. Okay, um, is there any questions on any of the specific projects? Um, rather than me going through each, each single one? Is there a specific, any other specific projects you want to look at?
Well, I had a question about the, the resort municipality ones, because it seems like the reserve that we have currently. I think it was one twenty, hundred and twenty thousand, it was set aside for RMI projects. And then there's way more than that anticipated, and I see another, another tranche is going to come into that. But I'm just wondering how that's going to work.
Well, yeah. But all those, all of those projects have already been identified and it's all funded by RMI funds. Just the RMI funds, you know, they come in, um, you know, annual allotments. And not a lot was spent uh, last year. So there's a lot to do this year as we get closer to the end of the agreement.
Okay, okay, all right. I just didn't see where the money was actually there for, for everything they had anticipated, right? But it might.
Well, there is a um, a reserve schedule on page one hundred and thirty seven.
Yeah.
And there's a separate line for uh, RMI on line number uh, fourteen.
Well, that's what, yeah, that's what I was looking at, right? Where it said there's a hundred and twenty in there.
Yeah. Yeah, but there's money going in and then there's, so at the end of twenty one, nineteen, or twenty twenty one, the balance is forty nine thousand.
Right. Yeah, I, yeah, I guess so, okay, so in the green, the, the green hundred thousand, that's new additions coming in?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, I, I, yeah, I guess that, I guess that makes sense. I mean, that's, it seemed like it was adding up to more money than was going to be there at any point in, in the fund. But I'm not going to worry about the financial management of it. You are, so go for it.
Yeah, sorry, just a quick question on that one, or a point of context on that one. Is that we develop a three year resort development strategy? And so the mu- well, how we do things now is we take that money, we know what the three year plan is. We get money from the province, we hopefully that our revenues are proper, because that's part of MRDT and some other things with the RMI projects. And then we kind of, this is the way that we financially account for it, so there's a carryover. But we have a dedicated three year plan with revenues and expenditures that add up to zero. And then now that we've taken it on from the city perspective, we just keep it in reserve and then there's a draw from that. So it all works out in the, the longer term and it just year to year, it would fluctuate based on drawing from reserves or allocation of what we get from the province.
Okay, great. Chris, you have a comment or question?
Uh, yeah, we considered uh, the shortfall in RMI, RMI funding in the next year or maybe two, based on what COVID's produced.
So, yeah, so we have, um, we're guaranteed a minimum amount of funding now. And so the projects that we have developed and the RMS that we have developed is the bare minimum. So we are guaranteed the money regardless as base funding. And then we've collected a little bit more than we have because of MRDT. So we actually have in our reserve, um, from the first two years of this new R, uh, my projects with the RDS. Um, program, we have probably between thirty to forty thousand dollars extra that we have to basically have surplus in that, in that fund. But the RDS, basically, we try to schedule that and plan for that for minimum funding. So, yeah, that's taken care of when we do the original plan with um, towards Roseland.
All right, thanks.
Good. Um, anybody else have comments on any of the, the project list? I, I was curious about heavy vehicles, the one oh five and one oh seven. Sounds like we're getting two, two hundred and forty two thousand dollar behemoths. Is that, is that right? We're getting two similar vehicles?
No, one, one was from uh, last year. It didn't come through. So sometimes it might look like um, it's more inflated, but it's just carried forward from the previous year.
Okay, but it's still two vehicles, one last year and one this year? Or it's just one vehicle carried forward?
No, it's two, it's two, one carried forward from last year, so makes two into this year.
And then there was a light vehicle replacement and, and is that, that's one that's up at Public Works? And is, it mentions that it's possibly a hybrid. Could it possibly be an EV, not a hybrid?
Yeah, that's big research right now.
Yeah, good, okay. Ford's supposed to come out with an electric truck, that's what we're looking for, so. Hope so, okay. Anything else, guys? Do you have anything up there? No? Okay, Alma, carry on.
Okay, well, that, um, you know, the next sections were just our, our progress on the um, asset management. Uh, readiness scale, this um, an eight point six, like page one forty seven. This is based on FCM's um, readiness scale. And then uh, what we did.
Can we go to that page?
Page one forty seven.
Yeah. Yeah, those were great.
Yeah, so this kind of gives you an overview of where exactly we are according to the FCM uh, framework. And one of the things that we're going to be looking at is the three uh, year roadmap, three to five year roadmap. You know, we've completed a lot of the projects that were on the list. And so now we really need to focus on, um, you know, developing more shovel ready projects for, you know, for the years ahead. So that's um, something that we'll be, we'll be working on.
Yeah, I thought those were really helpful, helpful kind of guidance documents. You know, I hadn't seen, I hadn't seen that before laid out like that, so that was good. You know what? I realized I did have a question on the water fund. Um, and it was just, are we doing the critical water star, star dam work even if we don't get a grant?
I believe we have to.
Yeah.
No, it's not optional. That's why it's critical, right?
Right.
It's labeled as critical.
Okay, so, but we have grant application in for that one that we're optimistic about, hopefully?
That's correct, yeah. So and then, um. We took that, um, you know, something that we were working with, uh, um. Oh, Stacy might have to help me out here. With the natural assets, we were um, working on getting an inventory for that. And uh, so they had some exercises for us to complete. And they were kind of following FCM's uh, framework. Um, for this asset management scale. And um, I thought, well, why not just uh, why not just use the whole scale? So Cynthia was kind enough to take, um, apply the FCM readiness scale. And turn it into a um, municipal natural asset maturity scale. Incorporating some of the things that we were learning uh, from this natural asset initiative.
Yeah, I think that's awesome. And I had a, a note after reading this, I had to add a note to Stacy about, well, let's make sure we, we get that well in hand in our OCP. And she said she was already all over it, so that's, that's great to see.
Yeah, I saw that mentioned in the, in the OC, OCP uh, presentation. And uh, so this is really, we're going to integrate, that's actually on, in the management work plan. Is to integrate the natural assets into uh, our asset register.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, so that's all for me.
Okay, council, any questions? I was happy to see our EV charger getting uh, more and more use on one of those charts that was in there. That was good. Um, okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised. If there's any other questions, you can put them in email and shoot them off to Alma and team. Uh, Janice, you got something?
Well, we were going to discuss the um.
Oh, we got to do the tax?
Tax rates.
Yeah, yeah, we got to do the tax rates, but just anything more on this whole portion, okay? All right, Alma, on to the tax rates.
Yeah, so that's on page, um, I want to go here. Page eighty eight. So what I just need, I trust that you've read through the different types of scenarios. And I'm just looking for. and I'm just looking for direction on, um, what you want to go with.
Okay, so first what I'd like to do is ask council if anybody has questions on any of this. And then if we get questions asked and answered, then we can take some recommendation, being put forward a recommendation, then we can discuss it. Does that work for everybody? Okay, any questions? No questions? Was very well-done charts here. Um, okay, if no questions, how about a recommendation? We need to give staff some recommendations. Our plan right now is a two-point-five percent increase. This, at our request, has provided some other options. Do we want to take one of those other options? Janice?
Well, I'd like to discuss some of the other options. But, you know, we don't need to make a policy, just a policy change to do that, it just changes the total revenue, how we, how we position that. Um, I'm happy with the policy of development paying or non-market change, paying for new growth. But maybe our, uh, maybe our tax rate is a little lower, so a little bit less goes into reserves. And I'm specifically thinking about, um, about the balance between, um, class one and class six. I think they're a little out of proportion, and, uh, over a significant period of time, they've gotten further. There's a further gap between the two of them. I'd like to see us close that gap a little bit. I think it's important because, uh, uh, an appropriate tax policy continues to, uh, keep our community attractive and retain the majority of our taxpayers who happen to be residential, and, um, yeah, and I think that, uh, you know, we look at it every year, so, you know, Alma's done an excellent job of telling us what the effects will be if we do make a decision, so that we can go on it with our eyes wide open, and we can look at it again next year and see where we want to go. I would say that in any normal year, which this clearly has not been, rather than reducing any of our rates from two-point-five to something lower, I would think about increasing some of our non-residential rates um, and maintaining the residential ones, but, uh, I don't think this has been a normal year, and I don't think that's a great way to move forward for this year.
Okay, anyone else want to comment on that, or Dirk?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm keen to have the discussion of the lower, not the two-point-five percent, uh, this year. Um, you know, we were in a good position last year to carry on sort of with the status quo, but, you know, we're a year into some significant disruptions and, uh, that are going to cost us provincially and federally in the future. So I, I think it's a reasonable discussion to have the lower rates now for a year. See where we're at, what happens recovery-wise and et cetera.
Okay, well, for discussion's sake, would you like to offer up which one you were considering?
Um, I, I think the one that, I went through them. Just fucking my cast roll. I think it was the one point five percent. You know, looked pretty close to, uh, keeping things level, community-wise, without, you know, burden that would hurt us downstream.
Move that up just a tiny bit more, so we see the bottom, yeah, there we go, perfect. Um, okay, so, uh, further discussion on the one point five?
Yeah, but just, that's sort of a further thing, I mean, in terms of tightening belts, you know, two hundred and sixty, whatever, percent, or two hundred and sixty thousand is not a big percentage change, so, you know, finding, I know we're efficient and all that, but, you know, opportunities always do arise.
Okay, and you're looking at the all-classes, one point five at, at all-classes, not separating class one from class six?
Yeah, I mean, I feel the same as, uh, Janice, but maybe now's not the time to, to bring that balance closer, certainly something we got to strive towards, but.
Yeah, I think we have to pay attention that our businesses have been hurt in the global pandemic. Um, councilors, Janice?
Well, the only, uh, the only thing I would add to that is that, um, Alma provided us with a chart where she went through and she worked out what had happened with the taxation for, uh, for the average assessed business uh, since twenty twelve to twenty nineteen, before we changed our tax policy. And, you know, the businesses were paying an aggregate difference of two percent over their twenty-twelve taxes in twenty nineteen. And so, uh, and certainly the residential groups were paying more, so, um, you know, we're not, they're paying two percent more than they paid in twenty twelve, or they were in, in, uh, twenty nineteen. And we've since added two-point-five percent, so now they're up to four and a half percent more than twenty twelve. Yeah, that's, it's hardly a hit.
Okay, other comments? Stuart?
Yeah, I'm not convinced that now is the time to be increasing the burden on our commercial uh, businesses, um, but, and likewise, I'm, I'm not convinced that, I mean, I, I think our costs, the CPI is going up, you know, approximately two and a half percent per year. Um, I think our revenues have got to track with that unless there's some compelling reason not to, and I'm, I'm just not seeing that. I'd, I'd say stay the course on two-point-five percent.
Okay, uh, Chris? You're muted. First one.
There I am. You think we were getting practiced at this?
We are.
Uh, I, and you know, I, I agree with closing the gap a bit between commercial and residential, but I also agree with the fact that um, this might not be the year, um, helping our residential burden is, is important, I think, to all of us. And then, but our plan has been built on accepted increases already, so what are we willing to sacrifice with the decrease in revenues? I don't like seeing red numbers anywhere. Um, you know, how exposed would we be if, if something were to, were to come up? We've got large workloads, we've got big grants that we have to fund, and some capital plans coming up, along with a, a big build, hopefully for a new, uh, city hall. So as we move towards incentives to attract some economic development in business, um, I don't know if, uh, a large increase in, in, uh, business taxes is, is prudent, but I, I do believe in closing that gap.
Okay, so I'm going to ask staff to comment on, on Chris's concerns about, you know, what, what the risk is, and what are we giving up, and those kind of things.
Well, I would say that whatever, we can cover operating, right? The way the operating is now. Um, what this has an impact on is capital. So you've already seen that there's, you know, there's a capital gap. And, um, you know, so that's what this will affect, this will affect the money that goes into reserves to fund capital. And that's really the bottom line. It's not gonna, you know, we're not, you know, there's no need to take anything operating off the list. Um, if you've said that, you know, growth should pay for itself, um, you know, it's, you know, that's where it's going to, it, it's kind of going to take some of that money out of that extra growth number that you've got over the long term. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Unless you decide that there's something you want to cut, right, to make up for it, right? You could decide that too, say, well, if we're not going to, we're going to give up a hundred and thirty thousand, um, you know, then what can we cut out of, out of the operating budget for a hundred and thirty thousand?
Right, Janice?
Well, I would say that, uh, you know, and, and it's referenced in the presentation, in twenty seventeen, the city cut two hundred thousand dollars out of the operating budget. And, uh, we didn't do that by reducing our purchasing of paper clips and notepads. We did that by, um, we did that by reducing accessibility of services to our community. Or we provided less, or, 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 any which way, we, we've already, you know, restricted or reduced our operating costs in twenty seventeen. Yet, you, you know, it's, and we continued to put money into reserves over that time. Um, so, you know, the only people that are, uh, the only people that are really sort of losing here are, um, our community, so I'd like to see us be able to, you know, and, and you've done a great job. It's great, uh, to be able to look at these numbers and actually know how we're going to affect this. Uh, I don't want to do something detrimental to the future ability of us to continue to provide the high level of services that our community enjoys. They obviously like it, and it's been successful for us. So I am sensitive about what we take off the table over the course of the whole year's plan. Uh, you know, I also noticed that things are changing for us, so, you know, we are looking at the full two-point-five percent plan. Or at our, you know, our mod, it's a very moderate tax increase, to be perfectly honest. Um, and I, in no way do I think our tax burden is unrealistic to, uh, currently. Um, but, you know, with our growth, um, with our natural growth, we're actually significantly above forecast for this year. And we don't know that we won't be even more above, we could be below or above next year, we don't know. No, no, uh, crystal balls, unfortunately, they don't ship those out when you get elected or even become a staff member. Um, but, uh, yeah, but we, uh, you know, I think we have the opportunity here to move a little bit, and, um, yeah. I mean, for me, it's, that gap just seems really, as a residential taxpayer, not just as a counselor, but as a residential taxpayer, that annoys me a bit. As a counselor, though, I think it's important that we, uh, look forward and make sure we keep the whole community in, uh, good shape, fiscally going forward.
So Janice, Janice, are you advocating to stay the course at two-point-five, or are you saying no? The one point five?
I, I would actually love to, uh, I would like to discount or discount or reduce the, uh, tax rate for the residential. I don't think that, uh, I don't think staying the course at two-point-five is a big hit for the, uh, commercial or other properties, other classes um, at all, so, you know, I think that, uh, the residential class has gotten us where we're at. We're in great financial condition, and, um, you know, we're, we're seldom able to do something for them. Uh, they've been, continue to invest in our community, they are ninety-five percent of our taxpayers. And, uh, you know, I'd like to see them have some benefit from their investment.
Okay, so you would be at the, uh, one and a half percent increase for class one and keep the others at two-point-five?
I'd even be okay with the two percent increase for class one and the rest of them at two-point-five. A half percent differential between the two would be fine with me. The gap didn't occur in one or two years, we can't expect to fix it in one or two years. So it has to be incremental and, uh, not onerous to any other, any of the property classes.
Okay, so, but also giving some acknowledgement that we've been through a global pandemic, and maybe there's a bit of leeway. Because at this point, we're just talking about for this year, right? We're not changing the plan, it's just for twenty twenty-one that we're looking at. Okay, let's hear from, let's hear from the other councilors who haven't spoken, uh, Terry.
Yeah, I, I think, um, uh, I like the idea of, um, acknowledging, um, what the world is going through, and, and, and again, in light of the pandemic, uh, one, I'd advocate for a, a one and a half for that uh, class one. Um, and it's, it's, I know it's, uh, more than symbolic, because it would, uh, affect our reserves. But if there was a time and place to do that, um, this feels like, um, again, this is more politically motivated than anything, I think, uh, like Janice said, it acknowledges that, uh, there's probably some people on the lower end of the socioeconomic program that are really paying attention to this, and then there's the, the folks that are continually harping about, um, taxes, uh, rightly or wrongly. It, it feels like the time to, um, claw that back a bit, that would be my thoughts on it.
Okay, we haven't heard from Andy, we haven't heard from Stuart, who's still there without his video on, so hopefully he'll come back.
I'm, I'm leaning that way as well, and I think that, uh, it, it probably would be a good time to to drop it back a bit, and I know there's an effort, uh, down at the regional district table as well, to keep things somewhat manageable. Some of the budgets have coming in at, at as low as zero percent increase this year, now, not overall, but, but some of the individual service budgets. Uh, I'm happy to, uh, for this year, um, recognition of the pandemic. Uh, and I, and I agree with Janice, let's keep the others at the two-point-five.
Okay, Stuart?
I, I think I already spoke on this, but I, you know.
You said two-point-five, I'm sorry.
I said two-point-five, I, I don't, I don't see people have taken a hit, I mean, most people in our community are, their income has been unaffected and their costs have gone down, I think people are flush with money, buying stuff and having a good old time, and why, don't have things to spend money on. You know, I, I mean, we can, I, it seems tokenism to give people a discounted taxes this year, because I don't think the needs there.
Well, i- i- it might be, but I am, I am somewhat interested in the three hundred and thirty-five people who, who answered the survey and said taxes are still their, like, number one thing, which points to two things, one, either they are hurting, and they're not necessarily the people in your circle, your bubble, um, or they're uninformed, which is why we want to get Janice's, uh, tax, tax pony show out there um, to try and help edu, yeah, help educate people, so.
I, I, I think I've been slumming it as much as anybody, Kathy, I just know that the government's been throwing money around, you know, I know lots of people that were paid all summer for doing nothing, and they didn't have to go anywhere, and, you know, I mean, these are people up and down the socioeconomic spectrum aren't doing that badly in Roseland at the moment. Um, you know, I think we've got a, you know, all sorts of challenges at the, at the high levels of government, the amount of money they've been, you know, they've basically been spending more than people have been suffering, there is money, we are flush with money. And we are looking at, you know, a real estate boom and rising housing prices, and, you know, as a consequence. And that's the, that's the stress that I'm hearing, people are freaking out because homes are, you know, selling for nine hundred thousand dollars in town, you know, this is, this is, this is people's fear, it's not their personal financial circumstances. It's the overall trends in the community that's disturbing people.
Well, but that, but that does, that's, that, that's only an issue, unless, you know, if they're trying to buy or sell. And what is an issue is if their house has gone up, is to seven hundred thousand dollars from two hundred thousand dollars, and now they're paying taxes that we set the rates on, their taxes are going up. Um, I want to ask Chris a question, because I think you're most connected with the business community. I mean, Stu's saying his, his, people that he knows are, are doing really well, would you say the same for the, for the business community?
Well, it depends on the business. Um, you look at companies that are in town like Thought Exchange and, and the liquor stores, and Ferrero's, and the, uh, pharmacy, and, you know, I, I think that they're all surviving, I know that which Bootree's had, had an exceptional year, and, and, you know, but then you look at the tourism-based stuff, um, I know for a fact that the restaurants are suffering. I mean, you go to Raptors, where normally your shoulder's a shoulder, and you could, you could hardly see somebody across the room. Um, so do I think that, that we're being impacted? Yeah, for sure. But I also kind of agree with Stu here, in that, you know, our community, I don't think is being as impacted, as impacted as, as, as others. Um, I think that we're quite influential that way. Um, I, I don't think, uh, a decrease in, in already accepted taxes is gonna, is gonna benefit us.
Okay, Dirk?
Yeah, I, I think I'd agree with Stu on one point of that, the, the government has been throwing around money, but that's something that will cost us, you know, next year or the year after, so that's not a, it's a temporary boon, and I think that the, to Chris's point, we haven't suffered as much as some communities, but certainly there are those in the community that are struggling with this. So, you know, finding a balance between status quo and, uh, you know, tailoring to a community that may have been struggling, uh, puts us in a nice middle-ground balance. So, you know, one and a half for residential, because I know people that have struggled, uh, in this, there's lots out there.
Okay, uh, Janice?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree with Stu that, you know, I don't think that our, uh, necessarily, the majority of our community is, um, especially our residential community is necessarily suffering, and may even have a little more disposable income, because they're not going off places, because none of us are. But I think, and my thinking is more to do with, um, the state of our city financial position. Um, and what we've done for our community. And, um, it doesn't really have to do with whether or not people can afford it or can't afford it. It has to do more with, uh, their investment in the community, getting us to this very, very, you know, fiscally stable position. And, um, you know, and, and, and we're all suffering in some ways, sometimes it's not financial. But just because we're generally an affluent community doesn't mean that every household in the community is. But just because we're generally an affluent community doesn't mean that every household in the community is affluent.
Yeah, um, Dirk, you have your hand up again or just? No, okay. Okay, so I've heard three different scenarios here, um, for, that we could make as direction to staff. One is that we take one and a half for class one residential and leave everything else at two point five. One is that we stay the course, two point five for everybody. And one is that we go two percent for residential, two point five for everybody else. So it, does anybody have anything other than those three as ideas? Okay, so since this is committee of the whole, I don't, I think we don't have to really do motion and second. We'll just, I'm just gonna ask for a, a, a show of hands. Um, who wants to keep it all at two point five across the board? Raise your hand. Okay, that's, that's one. And, oh, Chris, are you up there? Chris, too? Okay, you can just raise your hand physically if, because I don't want to, or do you want to speak, Chris? Okay, okay, so two people for two point five completely. I'm, I'm thinking that one's not going. So let's try, uh, one and a half percent residential, two point five on everything else. Who's for that? That, okay, it says one, two, three, four. Okay, well, there you go. There's four. Um, but just to see, let's go two percent and two point five percent. I like that one. Okay, so I think our direction to staff is that one and a half percent for residential, two point five for everything else. Everybody good with that? We're making that recommendation to our next council meeting or whatever, however staff wants to deal with that. Staff, you okay?
Yeah, uh, could we get a, could we get that in, in the form of a motion, please?
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Andy makes it and Dirk seconds it and.
Can I speak to it?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, could I, uh, I know the impact report, but from, from a public meeting standpoint in our next council meeting, could we have the impact of, exactly the impact of suggesting a one and a half percent? That would be great. I think it would just help to clarify that. And if anybody has any, uh, input between now and then, I'm kind of keen to hear that too.
Okay, so you, are you talking about just the, the page out of this report that shows the one and a half percent?
Yeah.
And, and then with two and a half percent on the others? Yeah, okay. Okay, all good? All, all in favor for that resolution moving to our council meeting? We're all good. Okay, all right, anything else? Anybody have any other comments? Staff have any other comments? Okay, look at that, one oh four. I think we can adjourn our meeting. Bye, everybody.
You guys need to go skiing now.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
See you on Monday.
You bet.
Thanks all, staff as well. Thank you.